Para las personas que prefieren escuchar esta junta en español pueden pasar con nuestro equipo de intérpretes al fondo de la sala del concilio de la ciudad para recibir asistencia. También pueden sintonizar la transmisión de las juntas del concilio completamente en español usando el sistema SAP a través de los canales que ve en pantalla. Si prefiere ver la transmisión desde un dispositivo móvil o para descargar la agenda de la junta de hoy visite la página web de la Ciudad de San Antonio, sa.gob-tbsa.
Good afternoon. The time is now 1:03 PM on Wednesday, August 6th, and the City of San Antonio special session is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Corum. Councilmember Castillo Angiano.
Here.
Councilmember Villagrande. Councilmember Mungia.
Present.
Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Galván.
Here.
Councilmember Alderete Gavito.
Here.
Councilmember Mesa González.
Present.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember White. Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor, we have Corum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we start, I'd like to welcome our interim District Two Councilmember Castillo Angiano to his very first meeting. Welcome. Okay, we've got a full agenda. We've got a full house as public comment has been allowed. So this is a special meeting on the proposed Downtown Sports Entertainment District with a focus on the economic impact analysis and community engagement report. And I asked last week for the city manager to push that meeting. We'd received quite a few, well, several documents, very lengthy, and I wanted to give my colleagues sufficient time to review those, so we pushed that to this meeting today. So thank you to everybody for being flexible. Those documents have been publicly available. I will note yesterday we received, and the city manager will correct me, but yesterday we received the economic impact report that the Spurs consultant provided. So that also is publicly available, but again, we received that yesterday. So Eric, please proceed with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So three components, as the mayor laid out. First, we'll kick off with Mario Peña from Abel City, transition to John Katz from CSL, and then Ben Gourzel has a few slides to talk to the council about the structure that we have discussed several times and look for some direction from the council in terms of next steps. Mario, turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Eric. So my name is Mario Peña. I'm one of the founding partners of Abel City, and we were hired to lead, design, a large-scale community engagement plan to reach as much of San Antonio as possible within these last summer months. Is my presentation up? Should I? Thank you. All right. So, really first and foremost, I want to thank Mayor Jones and the rest of the council for making space for this to happen during these summer months. And the team at Abel City, and I'm sure I speak for all of the staff at the City of San Antonio that we worked very closely with to roll this out, we really want to thank the residents, the advocates, all the participants, the business sector that came out. They used their personal time to come in and give us their vision, their opinion, so their time is really, really valuable to us, and we really, we want to make sure that we give them, you know, as much respect for their, sharing their views as possible, and so that's the goal of the engagement plan. Okay, so the purpose. So we always work sort of in a two-sided world. We call it co-learning, and the idea behind a community engagement plan like this is we want to make sure that there's space for community to learn the facts. So they're learning the, all of the available facts that were put together, that were driving the conception of a potential sports and entertainment district. And we talked to them about the public spaces that were there, that were a continuation of the Hemisphere Plan, the facilities that are potentially planned, mixed-use development, a funding plan, a preliminary funding plan, where the sources of funding might come from. And then obviously, we were there really mainly to listen. We, we had a, we'll get to this in the next slide, we had several methods that were really designed to coax out voices that are typically heard, right? Some people are very confident speaking in public and taking the mic and asking questions and engaging with a community engagement event, while others are not, and so that's why there was a variety of activities that were designed in the forums. And so those included public meetings, focus group discussions, stakeholder meetings. The difference between that is focus groups are, focus groups are actually topic-related, so we talked about housing, infrastructure, public space, local businesses. And then stakeholder meetings were around a specific interest group. We had some open houses, and obviously, we had a, and then we had a broad online survey. We also added a poll question where we polled the forum participants around what community priorities they would want to share with you all as we share the report with you. So engagement plan highlights. We, you know, we're happy to report that between June 24th and July 22nd, 1,400 residents attended all our in-person events. Online, over 2,500 people completed the survey, and over 400 people participated in this, in the poll that were, that was given at the forums. So here are just some highlights. We'll talk a little bit about what we heard in terms of content. Like I said earlier, sorry, my phone is... So what we heard just generally, and again, this is a summary, right? We're trying to reflect everything we heard right in a 20-minute presentation. If you, if you look at your draft report that was submitted, we go a lot more in-depth, and that's, that's online, everyone can access it. But in terms of summarizing it, really, what we, the repeated themes is the element of transparency and continued community engagement and back-and-forth information from the city to the residents and advocates. The conversation around community benefits. How can the community benefit from a project like this? Protections against displacement, traffic, as we know, parking, and really making sure that the district is designed for locals more than, more than anything else. So residents shared their aspirations about the district's cultural and recreational and economic potential. As far as big ideas, this was a, and I'll try to describe that activity where we gathered people's big ideas across all 10 districts. We split everybody up into round tables, and they had a map in front of them, and they could share really something they might want to map on the actual district. They might have shared a concern or an aspiration in general, so it was sort of carte blanche. And the value of that conversation is that people who have, again, a variety of perspectives on the project are talking to other residents, right, colleagues in city-making, about their, maybe varied ideas as well. And so at the end of that about 30- to 40-minute conversation and discussion and sharing of ideas, each table shared their three big sort of consensus ideas with the entire forum. And there we started seeing, you know, a pattern around connectivity and walkability, getting to and from the district, traffic congestion, affordable and inclusive housing. And then again, this element of making sure that this process continues to be transparent, that there continues to be accountability across, on the goals that are set and on the guiding principles that we'll present, was a big part of it. Next, I'll share a bit about what the housing focus group themes were. And again, these were housing focus groups that were held at each district, so there was a total of 10. They were all very well-attended. We were happy to see people come and speak out at those, and that's, and that was more of a format of Q and A, sharing a little bit about the project related to that topic. How does housing, how is housing related to the project? What are the potential opportunities for housing? And then after that presentation, we heard again, we heard this continued topic of concern of affordability and anti-displacement. Again, this is just something that is related to something that we're hearing, you know, across the whole city, right, not just around the district. It's very, it's very important. It's present, it's real in people's lives. Preservation and rehabilitation of existing, of existing housing. Again, focus around the neighborhoods that are going to be impacted by projects such as this. But then obviously, in districts that are not in D1, D2, you know, those concerns also resonated with those groups, even in their districts, right? So, so the thought of the spillover, right, of increased activity, economic activity, and what that means in terms of neighborhood preservation across the city was important. And then integration with transit and neighborhood stability overall. Transportation focus groups. So we had a few focus groups, again, those 10 focus groups across all 10 districts, and they, and the topics that we heard really were focused on expanding public transportation. The park and ride systems, I think that kind of resounded in my, that's what's in my head. Hey, we would love to have more expanded park and ride opportunities for people to get downtown with public transit across the entire city. Expanded transportation hours so that they're useful during an event, but also so that they're useful for work, for the workforce that are coming in and out of the district, to make sure that works for them, which is that last element on the slide. We also talked about public space, and there, the focus that we wanted to highlight here is, you know, the fact that people spoke a lot about safety, accessibility, and the design of public space, and that it continues to have a local identity. So don't make this sort of a disneyfied area. We heard that a lot. We want to make sure that San Antonio continues to look like San Antonio. People are very proud of the way that the city is designed and the heritage that they're, that they've had, that it was passed down to them by, by the, you know, by our forefathers that established the city and that we still get to enjoy every day. So again, the authenticity and preservation of our local identity. We also had a lot of conversations around programming, programming that was affordable, that was local, that was targeted at locals, that was targeted at youth. So what opportunities can we have for youth to engage and enjoy the district as we expand on it? Local businesses. So here again, it's all about the local, right? It's all about helping local businesses, creating opportunities by varying maybe sizes of tenants, of tenant spaces, and integrating that with the academic and workforce pipelines. All right, so I'll move on and to just briefly go through the themes that are embedded in the guiding principles. And so there's a list of guiding principles in everyone's report. It's quite a long list, and they're all categorized around these themes. And so this is what they are again, what resonated. This is maybe somewhat in order of, I don't want to say importance, but the pattern repetition that we saw, and so things just became more and more obvious that they needed to be part of the, of a category or a theme. So again, community engagement, continued community engagement, continued shared decision-making across all of the elements that would make the district, from projects, right, to the community benefits agreement. So sharing in that, in that decision-making was really important. Preserving housing and protecting neighborhoods, access to mobility, congestion and congestion relief. So open space, again, a category for open space, how important arts and culture is, and making sure that as monies are considered to be used for different elements, that the monies that are now part of what propels arts and culture, right, continues to be a key to making the space local. Local business and hiring, inclusive and equitable access, and maybe that bears a little bit of expansion. But this is related to making sure that events, programming events, are at all of affordable prices, right? So this is, so to make this a space that is useful, to make events that are held here accessible to all San Antonians. So just briefly on stakeholder meetings, and I have, I just want to, I want to note that as of this week, we're still engaged with some stakeholders. We are, we are bringing in notes and just great ideas from stakeholders even as we speak, so that's why, that's one of the reasons why you see a draft in your all's draft report, because we're still integrating this as we have conversations with stakeholders. But, but again, there was, there was a variety of perspectives that we're trying to capture in those stakeholder conversations, and so you see some of these here, right? Some of them are related to reviving community traditions, supporting that visitor experience, being inclusive in our design as far as accessibility. And then, and then some even more and more specific, this is where we have more specific conversations about elements like the Alamo Dome improvements and specific project needs like that. Okay, so then, so of note is that toward the middle of our, of our community engagement plan, there was a Q and A session that was added. And so at the suggestion of Mayor Jones, she wanted to make sure, I think, and I can't speak for you, Mayor, but I, you know, but I think I get the spirit of why that was important to you, that that was added, so people had a chance to be a little more engaged before we got into the table discussions. So we were, we were asked to just include a little bit of a Q and A right before so that the discussions, I think, were a little more informed when we broke out into those groups.
Well, let me just clarify. When I went to the, it was the one session that I went to, it was the D10 session, and it was a presentation that was laid out by Ms. Houston, and then there were comments provided by the Abel City representative, and then they went straight into asking folks to draw on the map. And when I looked, when I received the presentation from the back, I was, it was a packed house, right? Credit to District 10, it's always packed. But I did hear folks, you know, kind of lean over and said, when are, when are we going to ask questions or when are we having a discussion? And because there wasn't a formal part of that presentation, which I was surprised by, and I think those in attendance were also surprised, I wanted to make sure that that, we amended that moving forward, so I appreciate the team's inclusion of that for the sessions that followed.
Sure, sure, absolutely. No, yeah, of course, and there was, and you know, we welcome that, that element in it, and we really tried to extract the most value out of it as we could, and then we broke out into the, into the table discussions. So those, the presentation went away. Here we go. So a lot of those really centered on, again, arena funding, right? That was, that was one of the repeating question elements or themes. Transportation, congestion, parking, you know, we start to see a pattern here. Economic impact, you know, is this good, is this good overall for the entire city? And then of course, questions on affordable housing and what that means, where it is, what, you know, what the plans are for it. How does, how does this plan plug into affordable housing generally, and how does it, how can it solve the affordable housing crisis or be an element in solving the affordable housing crisis for the city overall? I think that we all agree that's one of our most prescient issues that we're all trying to respond to as well as we can. And so then now I'm going to take you through the citywide results. Now this, this paints somewhat of a different picture from what we saw at the forums. So I could say there's a slightly broader perspective here from people that maybe couldn't attend the meetings, and I'm sure a lot of people that attended the meetings answered the survey as well. But this was 2,500 respondents across the City of San Antonio, and so these are the questions that were asked, and maybe it's a little small on there, so I'll help with a little bit of reading. "How familiar are you with the proposed Downtown Sports and Entertainment District?" Somewhat familiar. I must say that by the time somebody got to this question, there was a previous question, and I'll go to the end, "Did you watch the video?" So that, so there was a video explainer created to just give everyone the basic level of information that we thought was valuable to answer the survey. So by the time they got to here, they at least had that baseline level of understanding as they gave us their input. "How often do you attend large events downtown and concerts or cultural celebrations like Fiesta, Diwali?" So rarely was the top answer, and occasionally was a second top answer. "How do you usually travel downtown?" You know, we're in San Antonio, it's going to be the personal vehicle. There's lots of efforts in hand to increase that, and again, we heard that like resoundingly, we want to get to this, to these events on public transportation as much as possible. That's actually one of the other questions that were answered. "What would make it easier and more enjoyable for you to travel to events or Spurs games in the Entertainment District?" This, people could pick more than, more than one. So the top three were more convenient public transportation options, safer sidewalks and improved street lighting, and additional parking. "How important is it that the Sports and Entertainment District include nearby affordable housing?" Very important was the top answer, somewhat important. So those two were the top two answers, right, that were the majority of the respondents. "What factor would make, would make you consider using something other than a personal vehicle to get downtown?" So selecting the top three. Faster travel time, lower cost than parking and gas, and then lastly, more reliable and frequent transit service. So again, the theme here is public transit seems to be a key element for the respondents, right, as a solution for the traffic and as a way to make it a more enjoyable way to get to an event at the district. "How important are Spurs to San Antonio culture?" So I guess no surprise there, right? The top answer was very important or somewhat important, so there's a high priority there amongst the community. "What factor would make you consider using something other than..." Oh, sorry, I just read that. "What concerns, if any, do you have about the proposal or changes in the Sports District?" So increased traffic and congestion. That was the top answer, followed by rising costs and gentrification. Okay, and then lastly, "Would you, would you like to stay involved with updates?" You know, answer was yes. Again, the calling for more community engagement and continued transparency and shared decisions was a big part of it, and this shows that people want to stay more informed. "What types of amenities would enhance your overall experience when visiting the Sports and Entertainment District?" So more dining options, welcoming public spaces. This, this just kind of got a really like good, broad spectrum of the whole thing. You were able to choose up to five here. All right, so "Did you watch the video?" We talked about that, and then this is a key one. "No property taxes from general taxpayers will be used to build a San Antonio arena. However, would you support the use of city bonds to improve traffic, walkability, and pedestrian safety for the Sports and Entertainment District if the San Antonio residents were to vote on a city bond?" And so we had, the top answer be yes, and then, and then as a tie, the other two answers were no, and then unsure, we need more information. Again, focusing on needing more information, continued, continued conversations with the public is key, and so that would, that would then be sort of the conclusion of that, of that last answer, which is sort of an unresolved, like we need more information and we want to make sure we provide it. And then next, the poll results. So this poll was given to the participants of the forum, and the poll asked if you were, if you were, if we could use a million, if you could use a million dollars to anything you want, right? And this is all, that's metaphorical, right? It's, we all know it's not just a million dollars, it's sort of just a way to set priorities. "What is your top priority in the use of resources that the city could provide?" And so here we have, and again, an explanation here, we had an original poll result with fewer choices. We got some really great feedback from staff, and again, we always say this at the beginning, we are, we are needing to, whenever we see improvement, we can pivot. This is part, we can pivot from input from residents, we can input from input, so pivoting and improving the experience and the information we give you is definitely something we're open to. So we did the original one in D2, D4, D5, D7. We got the result of, the top result of increased affordable housing as a top priority. And then as we expanded the poll into more questions, then the top result was economic and workforce development followed by affordable housing. And so those are the, and those were rolled out. And so those are the, and those were rolled out in the rest of the districts. And in the, in the repeat forums that we had in D eight. And, and one, actually, I didn't talk about this, but we did a, we, we, as an aside, we, we did a great added forum for students, we called it Student Edition. We worked with a Better Futures Institute to help, and that was a really great experience, hearing just from the youth. So we encourage you to see the results of that in your report. That was, that was sort of inspiring to see all these kids just really interested in, in, in giving feedback to their city leadership on the project. So, what's next? This is not a conclusion, right? This is a starting point for a conversation. We, we really wanted to provide with, to you a structured reflection of what we heard to help you make the difficult decisions that, that you have to make as you roll this out, and a way to guide those decisions. And so, we are, I'm here to answer questions, and we're here to support the, the follow-up of the, of the, of the, of the conversation that, that, you know, I think the community is asking for to, as this rolls into the next phase.
Thank you for the presentation, if, if I may, just because there wasn't a Q and A portion at all of those, and I noted the ones where there was not one. So, if that council member was present for that Able City session and would like to provide some feedback based on what they heard and saw there, I wanna give those, those members an opportunity. So, see, Councilwoman Viagra was here, but she has stepped aside. Councilwoman Castillo, would you like to share anything based on the session that you attended, if you attended? Please.
Sure, so a couple of moving pieces. I appreciate the work that Able City did with the timeframe that they were issued in scheduling meetings with community on a very short notice. And with that, right, each council district was assigned a meeting and not necessarily given the flexibility to move around the assignment for community engagement. So with that, the assigned date for District Five, it conflicted with something that we had. So I, I think that's an issue that I did bring up to the mayor during our one-on-one. And I do think that, again, given the timeframe that Able City was given, you all provided the best facilitation that y'all could. But I'll get into the weeds in terms of the, the survey results when I get into my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
I see there weren't, there was not a Q and A session at District Seven. So Councilwoman, did you attend that session? If you did, if you'd like to share comments.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I didn't, because as Councilwoman Castillo just pointed out, they were scheduled without us. And so we, I had a prior commitment to Neighborhood Association.
And then, yeah, Councilman White, if you'd like to, I saw you there, so go ahead.
Yes, and, and thank you, Mayor, for attending our District Ten session. I think the sessions were, were really good overall. I think the biggest problem with this whole thing from the beginning has been the lack of information that, that has been shared with the public. But we're finally at the stage now where they're getting that information. And Lori did a great job on that night of presenting the facts to, to my constituents in District Ten. And I heard many comments at the end that, that now that folks were understanding the financial structure of the project, that they were, they were much more optimistic that something could be done, that, again, the whole community could, could get behind and something that would benefit all of San Antonio. So, so I was pleased with how it went. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Councilman White, in that the Able City presentations did not include numbers. This was an idea of how it would go about, but there were not hard and fast numbers associated with the costs. Certainly, the contribution, by that time, we had not received, for example, the Spurs' letter about their contribution, nor had we the guarantee from the county with their willingness to go up to 399 million when you include the 88 million that they'd be willing to forego to let the Spurs out of their contract. So, I think it's helpful that we, you know, level set in terms of the information that folks did have and opportunity to provide feedback on. And a piece of that information was not how much this would cost and did not include how much each would be asked to contribute.
But, well, if I could, Mayor, we did, we were able on that night, as, as you remember, to, to lay out the basics of the structure and the fact that the prop, no property taxes would be used towards the stadium. And we had an idea on that night of, of, you know, who would be paying what. And, and we also talked about the infrastructure piece.
I'm familiar, Councilman White, yeah, yeah. And I think that's, no, no, so, no, one second, excuse me. So while I think it's really important that we talk about the, I mean, laying out what the P F, what the P F C actually is, what the TERS actually is, we did not spend a lot of time clarifying that for folks. I know there is a statement out there, yes, that this is not coming from the general fund. I understand how folks are making that argument, I understand that. That doesn't necessarily mean that money that could go into the general fund, right? Or some percentage of that, right? That is still, again, something that we can clarify and level set for folks because, just because it goes into the TERS doesn't mean it could not also come into the general fund.
Yeah, we definitely didn't go that, that deep on that night.
Well, that's, and that's the important part, is people need to know how it would be financed, how it would be financed. Let me save the rest of your comments for your time. Okay. Eric, did you wanna go through all the presentations and then comments?
I was gonna suggest that, Mayor, yes, ma'am. So John Catsell.
Actually, I'm sorry, let me, let me just afford Councilwoman Viagra the opportunity. For those, there wasn't a formal Q and A session at your Able City session, so if there's some comment that you wanted to provide during that, please do so, Councilwoman.
No, I wanna thank you for what you did at our session. I think people were able to kind of talk at the tables. While a Q and A would have been nice, my residents were very good. I was there for a portion of the time of expressing what they wanted, and it was what you hit on. How are they gonna get there? When they get here? How much is it gonna cost? Where they're gonna walk? And the other aspect was the culture. So, no, my residents did express their questions to me and continue to do so, so thank you.
Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to be here. I'd like to begin talking broadly about the general economic impact model, the funding and development model that tends to govern these types of projects, including San Antonio. And I'm looking at it in three perspectives. The revenues that support the projects that we studied, which really were the convention center, the Alamo Dome, new music venue. And then separately, there's general economic development, housing in the district. But from a venue perspective, we look at those revenues. The first one, the Hotel P F Z, is really legislatively dedicated to public assembly venues. The hotel occupancy tax, again, it's a tax paid by the visitors. So the model that's being developed is, let's get the visitors to pay through these various mechanisms to fund a variety of projects for the community. And in this particular case, the assets we're looking at would be the staying competitive in the convention industries through investment in the convention center. Improving the Alamo Dome for major events and community benefit. It is an aging old structure. So improving it, just to get back to general standards, is, is an important element. A new music venue that kind of slots into that four to 5,000 seats into a gap that we have for attracting a large number of these mid-sized concerts to the market. And then, as I mentioned, the broader district economic development that exists and can exist throughout the district. Those are the, the assets that are being developed through taxes that are largely visitor-based. That's the model, we see this in every city we go to. The spin-off benefit for the public sector includes the employment, the wages, tax revenues, quality of life assets for your residents as they attend these facilities. And then economic development in the sense of broadening the tax base, growing the tax base to support development within the entire community. And San Antonio is a growing market. So this is a model that we'll see and we, we tend to see all over the country. And we actually see it here also in the airport. Just looking back at enplanements or air traffic data, we're looking at a two and a half to 5% growth annually in air traffic, yet we're looking at about a nine or 10% growth in the billions and billions of dollars spent on the airlines industry and the airports. And those, the revenue comes from the airline industries through fees. So you're using that industry to fund billions of dollars of investment in, in this particular case, airports. We see that in San Antonio with a $1.4 billion Terminal C project, and it'll be fantastic, two and a half billion dollars over 20 years. It's a model where we take those people that use it and we use it to fund the asset. So, very similar around the country, it's what we see pretty, pretty regularly. So now let's kind of get into some of the, the math, if you wanna think of it that way. Economic impact is not a complicated science. It's A times B times C, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when we look at this, we start with the new events that might be attracted to the venues. Who are we gonna bring in that we've been losing? What will this investment in a, in a convention center, a stadium, arena, a music venue, what will these investments do in terms of bringing new events to our market? How many attendees will we generate? And then of that, which share of these attendees are new to our community? In our models, we've basically looked at the new convention activity we might attract, and we've taken 29 to 37% of it and just washed it out of the model. The theory is that even if it's a big convention, we may be attracting attendees from the regional area. And if somebody comes from 15, 20, 30 miles away to go to an event, they're not staying in the hotel. So we, we try to be conservative in the sense that it's the new visitors that might come to the market. I look at consumer shows, and you've probably all been to an auto show or home and garden show or whatever it might be. 95% of the impact of any, any new events, we wash out of the model. If it's an entertainment event at the convention center or a seminar or something like that, 99% of that gets washed out of the model to make sure we're just focusing on those impacts that are new to the community. Then we multiply that by per spending per capita using national data adjusted for the hotel situation and rates in San Antonio. And that gets us to the upper right, the new spending generated by the, the event attendees and patrons and the exhibitors and the promoters. What we're careful about is making sure we're not, we're not missing something that might lead us away from the notion of net new. So as I mentioned earlier, we're not, we're not counting spending by locals. When I look at the event days that might come from the convention center, how long an event lasts, we know that not every attendee stays all three days or four days. So we take that down a little bit. Some markets, we make a counter adjustment. We did not do that here to increase the average length of stay for people coming a little early, staying a little late for leisure. We're San Antonio, we have the ability and we actually do do that. But just to be safe, we've not included any of that come early, stay late impact. Not all sales are taxable. If it's a tax-exempt group, we don't count their tax impact. That's 5 to 10% haircut right there. There is potential development, obviously, in the district, but then across I thirty-seven, in the lots around the Alamo Dome, and we're not including that. We have seen plans that show residential restaurant entertainment development within the district, around the existing convention center, potential new music venue, potential new arena. But the plans for the other side by the dome have not been fleshed out. And if it's not on paper and it's not fleshed out, it's not in the study. In addition, I suspect, and you probably all would agree, that as this project takes place, if it does, development on parcels around the district will also move forward. Developers are going to look at that and they're gonna wanna invest in that. And that's not counted in this. Not all attendees use hotels. Another 5 to 10% haircut, and we don't count property taxes in our models. So with that, the concept of net new.
Sir, if I may, can you go back to your methodology? I think it'd be helpful to shape the rest of your presentation. Can you outline the assumptions that you made?
I have snippets of them here, they're, they're in the full report that you have not seen yet. But that is, as we get the economic impact and the program numbers finalized next week, you'll see all of them. But I can certainly walk you through a lot of the assumptions.
Okay, so there's another forthcoming economic impact analysis report?
Well, there's the full report for, for example, the convention center, the full feasibility study. And in that report, we talk about the events and the new attendance, so those kind of metrics that drive the economic impact. We're looking, and I'll get to that on the convention center slide, we'll get into some more of that as well.
And that's really helpful, because I think in the, in the district, I mean, one of the assumptions we'd, we'd have to make based on what you're gonna present, for example, is whether the sports and entertainment district can in fact support two competing venues, two competing arenas. So we have to assume that is the case to allow for the rest of your analysis to be justifiable. Is that, so is that a key assumption you made?
It, it is, and we looked at the entire landscape of music entertainment venues in, in San Antonio. And, you know, the big daddy is the Alamo Dome, 65, 70,000 seats. You look at any professional sports arena, and they're in that 19, 20,000 seat range. We have a couple of venues, Moody Gardens Amphitheater, for example, that are in that smaller share, but not a lot. And that's where we play. So imagine going from 60,000 to 20,000, we're four to five. So with respect to those three venues, it's a nice progression. In a dream world, if I'm a, I'm a music professional, I may start at the new music venue and I may graduate to the, the new arena, and then I may graduate someday to doing a stadium tour. So they're all three different markets within the same general industry. So we have looked at that carefully, and that'll be all laid out in the report. So economic impact, net new, we just talked about net new direct spending, but we also know that that is respent. So if the front desk manager has to take her daughter to a doctor, there's spending generated by her job, the fact that she's employed, into other sectors. The concierge at a restaurant may have to get his car fixed. So there's a respending of dollars that move into wages for the hospitality industry that impacts the entire economy. And that's part of the induced and direct spending. So we talk about this notion of total output in the middle, that's what it is. It's the direct, indirect and induced spending. So the projects that we're looking at, you can see there, there are five of them here. We've studied four of them, the convention center expansion, the Alamo Dome improvement, the new music venue. We've also looked at not the, not the feasibility, but the impact of proposed development throughout the district. The arena is another project that we have not studied in detail, but I'll leave that for comments later. Looking at the convention center. We are looking at, let me miss, Mr. Page here. We are looking at a, in terms of the expansion program, and I think you probably have not seen all of this in detail. But generally speaking, what's happening is, you're familiar with some of the halls, Bridge Hall and a couple other spaces. We're gonna remove those and create a brand-new Hall Five and expand it a little bit. So we go from having first-class state-of-the-art space, substandard space, first-class space, to combining it all into first-class space and expanding it a little bit. We're looking at, I think it's 74% occupancy in our, in our space now, our exhibit space now in 2025. In fairness, that includes some activity from the final four. So if I take that out, we're still at 68% occupancy in that existing exhibit space. We think there's room to increase event activity. We also know that even though we're at 68, 70, 74% occupancy, which is incredibly high, by the way, we're not entitled to that. We, we simply, no market, this isn't a San Antonio perspective, but no market can sit there on a product or, you know, a particular service or whatever it might be and not invest to maintain their future. We know that in Dallas, they're looking to spend 3.3 to 3.5 billion dollars on reinventing their entire district. To be determined, it's underway now, usually using the P F Z money. Austin's 1.6 billion, Fort Worth is 780 million, and Houston Phase One is 1.8 billion. So in Texas, and the whole world is watching this, this is really an amazing phenomenon with the P F Z money, they're looking at a 7 and a half billion dollars plus of investment in the convention industry in markets that you compete directly with. So they have kind of laid down the gauntlet to say, if you wanna retain your market share, let alone increase it a little bit, this is, this is, you, you would have to step up. You can't, you can't simply rest on your laurels. I, I think of other industries, this is just not a convention center question or a, arena question or a stadium question. If I'm inventing the next iPhone, or if I'm building the next car, and you go to Ford and say, "Stop your, stop your investment in creating new product and improving." Or Apple, same question. I mean, it just doesn't work that way. We always have to continue to invest to stay competitive. World's changing, how people learn are changing, convention centers are responding to that. And with the competition that's going on, in order for us to maintain and potentially increase our impact a bit, we're gonna have to do something. We're looking at, on the next slide, when I, when I talk about, as far as some of the assumptions, Madam Mayor, we're looking at about a 16% increase in direct spending. That net new direct spending, we talked about, all the calculations and the subtractions we go through. We're looking, in exchange for the investments you make, about a 16% increase under the do-nothing scenario, working with Visit San Antonio and kind of contracting some of the business appropriately, we're probably an 11% decline. So the gap there is really about a 25 percentage point change in our business for better or for worse. When I build those assumptions into the calculations that we kind of walked through a little bit in terms of the, the big picture, we're looking at about $108 million in net new direct spending. You can see that on the bottom there. That blends that 16% increase and the 11% decrease. With the indirect and induced spending, that adds another 97. So we're looking So we're looking at two-hundred-and-five million dollars annually in our mature year of operation, of net new direct spending and total output for the community. Now, if this is a thirty-year financing project, so if we look at over a thirty-year period, we get eight-point-three billion. That's the simple math. It's just eight times, or eight, eight times thirty. It's not hard. But that's a little bit of cheating, because we're counting inflation in those numbers. We can't do that. For, for, for true economic impact analysis perspectives, we have to deflate year thirty, year twenty-nine, twenty-eight, et cetera, back to twenty, twenty-five dollars. And that's where you get that four-point-two billion dollars of thirty-year combined total output as a result of the investment in the convention center. Again, that's not all new from where we're at today, but it's new from where we'd go if we did nothing. And the ROI of this is, it's an interesting discussion. This is not a classic cash-on-cash return-on-investment. Again, we're asking the visitors to pay for this. So what is the return on investment for the city? I look at it more as a impact metric. So if you wanted to, you could take the two-point-two billion dollars of direct spending, I'm not even going to count the indirect and induced, and you could marry that with the seven-hundred-and-fifty million that's been proposed for the project, and you end up with a ratio of directs, new direct spending to investment of two-point-nine-three. Again, that's not a return on investment. This is not cash-on-cash. All the financing gurus out here are going to say, what are you doing here? But it is a useful metric for a community to understand, how much economic development are we getting in exchange for the visitor paid for, seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars in economic, in convention assets in that particular case. Now we shift to the Alamo Dome, and it's quite a different story. We're looking at fairly, I would say modest investments over the next ten, twelve years, perhaps a hundred million dollars. And what that's doing for us is the F F and E, the furniture, fixture, equipment in the building will be improved. We're looking at enhanced food and beverage on the lower level, third-party event spaces, digital placemaking investments, it's a trend-forward development, and then upgrading the entry plazas. So basically, a ten-year plan to improve our, our place in the industry relative to some of these brand-new sparkling NFL stadiums, for example. We're not going to get there, but if we do nothing, our fear is that we're going to continue to degrade. The building, from an experience perspective, is very challenging. The lines are long for food, the restroom lines are long. It just doesn't work as effectively as it could. And this plan is designed to set a budget for investment to continue to, to improve the venue. And then ideally, what happens after that, after that period of time, we're looking at dipping back into the final fours, maybe adding the college football playoffs, the championships, NBA All-Star Game. We're not there yet with this investment, but we have set the stage, kept the building in the game, so for the next generation, we can invest to start attracting those events. And none of those events are in our economic impact numbers. So what is, what is our incremental impact? And here's, here's the good news, bad news. Good news, bad news is you're doing a really good job, management's doing well, of attracting large stadium concerts and stadium entertainment events. They're getting their share of those events. So even with the hundred-million-dollar investment we're talking about, we're not looking at doubling our business. We may get one extra concert. We may get one extra international soccer match, but that's kind of where we're going to level off. So you see the impacts, thirteen million direct and eleven million dollars, twelve million dollars in indirect are not massive, but what it again is doing is keeping our building in the game, so to speak, for the next ten years, preventing it from deteriorating, and very importantly, offering the, the community a better asset to experience live entertainment. Now, I'll, one more thing on that, that ratio we talked about. I did just do the quick math, and if it is a hundred million over ten, twelve years, and we're generating two-hundred-and-fifty-nine million in direct spending, relatively speaking, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine is not a huge number, but, but a hundred million is a lot less than some of these other projects. So our ratio is actually not bad of what we're spending versus what we're getting in new spending in the community. Music, I'm sorry, music venue, again, this fills that gap, I just jotted these down, the Sunken Gardens Amphitheater, the Cowboy Dance Hall, R and J Music Pavilion. There are a few venues in that three, say thirty-five-hundred to five-thousand-seat range. What this supposes is that we're repurposing an existing building that has no purpose today into a venue that's much, much more state-of-the-art for this growing segment of the concert and entertainment industry in that three-to-five-to-six-thousand-seat range. It is a huge market, and we get some of it, but we could, we could definitely get more of that if we were to invest in that. We have talked to some of the promoters that, that operate these kind of venues, that put events in there, and they're incredibly excited. Some are talking about, we could do eighty new concert and entertainment events a year and this kind of thing. We've taken a haircut on that a little bit. I think that might be a little aggressive, but we're, we're, we're running a whole series of these events, filling that gap in space, not competing with a new NBA arena, certainly not competing with a seventy-thousand-seat dome, but serving our niche with respect to that concert and entertainment business. And if we look at what's happening in terms of the impacts, again, they're, they're somewhat modest. We've got thirteen million in direct spending and twelve-point-seven million in output on an annual basis. You'll notice that's actually less than the dome, the Alamo Dome. And I know a lot of people have said, why is this little venue more impactful than the dome? It's not. Not even by a stretch. The new business to the dome isn't as impactful as the new business to this venue, because we are able to get dozens and dozens and dozens of concerts that can't come to the market now, whereas we're only able to get one or so large concert at the dome. So that's why we're seeing that. But again, it's a modest impact on an annual basis, twenty-six-and-a-half million dollars a year in, in direct and indirect spending accumulating to three, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine million over the course of the thirty-year period. Now we look at the mixed-use district itself, and you can see shaded there what we're counting, and you can also see by virtue of that what we're not counting. You don't see any development around the dome, you don't see any development outside of this space, but just talking to economic development and talking to city management, there's a tremendous amount of interest in developing all around this district. The district isn't the sole factor that might spur that, but it certainly is an important factor. And I want to emphasize, we're not counting really any of that. We're counting nineteen-hundred-and-twenty residential units, a couple of hotels, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square feet of office space, in the, in some sense, designed to accommodate and complement the conventions under the dome and the music venues by developing these restaurants and this walkability. I know in the, in the previous session, talking about community outreach, unique and authentic is huge. And for us, this will be, this has to be infused with that. And I say that because the convention attendees are looking for that. I don't want to come to San Antonio and not know if I'm in Cleveland or anyplace. I want to know I'm here. And when you tie in the essence of what's happening with La Vida and Almocato, all the things that you have are what they want. And making sure that that's part of this is also very, very important. Now, the notion of net new, we've looked at the population growth projections, we've looked at the greater affinity for people to live downtown, it's, it's becoming a thing. So when we look at the new residents coming in, we've taken forty percent and eliminated it. We've kept the sixty. The forty percent might be somebody moving from somewhere else into this district, and the place they moved from is never filled again. So we've taken, taken some haircuts there. We've also taken some similar haircuts on any dollar spent in restaurants, retail. Half of that just washes out of the model, because we don't want to count displacement from another venue to here. Okay. So with all of that, we look at the
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah, yeah.
Because here is an assumption that you've actually, that you've been explicit about. Why did you assume that number of residential units versus a different number?
Yeah. So again, we didn't do the feasibility study, we haven't studied this, but there are firms that have, have done this. We've talked to them and their clients, and we simply take what they've given us. Here's what we think we will develop over the next twelve years. That's what this is. And now we look at the impacts of that. If I take, just imagine you're a young professional, and you move into the district, and you're spending money in the evenings, you're spending money retail in the area. That's new spending if you're a new person to San Antonio. Same thing with restaurants, same thing with the office workers. And if I take all of that, we're at a hundred-and-seventy-eight million dollars in net new direct spending by virtue of the residents, office workers, restaurant activity, retail activity, et cetera, and that leverages up to two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-point-eight million. And if you look at that over thirty years, it's four-point-one billion dollars. So it's a, it's a substantial amount of impact. The financing, again, we're not looking at this and how that relates, I'm more comfortable with the convention center, music venue, and the Alamo Dome and how they're paid for with visitor taxes. But I, I think a substantial portion of this is private development. So there's, there's some discussion as to how much of this is public, private, but that's to be determined. But still, a substantial amount of impact. Getting to the end here, I mentioned the New Spurs Arena, and as I said, we have not studied this at all, but we have seen studies that you've just received that show the net new direct spending is around two-hundred-and-twenty-five billion dollars a year. We have, through our professional sports analysts, it's, it's not my department, but we do have a professional sports department, they recently conducted a study in Milwaukee that showed, I want to say a hundred-and-eighty-six, eighty-seven in, in same-year dollars, million of direct spending. That's Milwaukee, we're San Antonio, so the, the study did not seem to be substantially out of line with respect to those numbers. So I, we're, we were willing to present them in here. I will tell you point-blank, if there are numbers that we're not comfortable with, they would never see the light of day in this report. So we didn't do the study. I can't tell you, we would have come up with two-twenty-five. It probably would have been in that ballpark. So we, we agreed that we would include it in the study. Next, we start putting it all together. This does not include the arena. If I look at that direct spending number, three-hundred-and-thirteen million in direct spending from the convention attendees, from that person going to a small concert, from the person going to the new concert at the Alamo Dome, or the international soccer match, from that young professional moving to San Antonio and living downtown, working in the district, from out-of-towners coming to the restaurants and the unique retail, all of those things accumulate to three-hundred-and-thirteen million direct spending, five-point-four billion over thirty years. And if you look at the, the economic output, total output, which is the direct, indirect, and induced, it's nine-point-four billion. Of that, this is not additive, it's nine, of the nine-point-four billion, two-point-six would be in earnings. That would support three, thirty-three-hundred-and-sixty jobs over the course of the period. And then city tax collections on a net present value basis of a hundred-and-eighty-two million. And again, going back to that model, and I'm not saying it works this way perfectly, but if there's a way to get the visitor industry to pay for these assets, and you end up pocketing a hundred-and-eighty-two million because of it, those are the things that the markets we work in all over the country are, are looking to do. Last two slides, construction impact. We don't know what the construction costs are going to be ultimately, so we looked at it from the perspective of, if you spend a billion dollars, looking at the share of, of that billion dollars that might be spent on local labor, local supplies, working with some of the best cost estimators in the country, we've estimated six-hundred-and-sixty-five million of that billion will be, will be local, local impacts. And if you apply the construction multipliers, every billion would be one-point-two billion dollars in spending, not, not cash in your pocket, but in spending as a result of the construction. And obviously, that lasts just through the construction period. And lastly, numbers, 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 they're great, but there are other elements to consider when people look at convention centers. And I'm a numbers guy, so don't, don't get me wrong. But I do want to emphasize that there are transformative effects that take place with the investment in the convention industry. And I look around the country in projects we've done. Boston is one of the most successful convention centers in North America, and you cannot believe what's happened around that convention center. These things spur economic development. You folks go to the convention center. You have a better ass, a better, better product, a better experience at the new music venue, at the Alamo Dome, so there's a quality-of-life impact, new visitation. The people that come to some of these big conventions aren't just the average Joe, they're business leaders. I was talking to my friend that runs the convention bureau in Denver, and he said, something like eighty percent of the CEOs of companies that have, that have moved to the Denver area have been to at least one convention in the past. Not to say it's cause and effect, but it's kind of your front door to some respect to important business leaders and residents and other attendees into the market. I, I love that the economic and workforce development was one of the most important elements in your community outreach, and we've talked to relocation specialists, and one of the first things they do is take their clients into the downtown area. Imagine if they're driving them through the entertainment district, the ability for a CEO or a company to retain and attract the next generation of workforce is benefited by this type of development. Companies can then relocate. Anchor for revitalization all throughout downtown, we talked about that, and then ultimately, you know, civic pride, community pride, call it what you will, but, you know, if we've got assets that are degrading, that we're inviting our friends and neighbors from around the country to versus assets that are state-of-the-art, there is an element of community pride that you can gain by virtue of doing that. So you've seen a, a quick dive into the numbers, and Mayor, I do appreciate your perspective on the assumptions. The math is not hard. We can show you the events, the attendees, the non-local, the spending per capita, all of that exists, and that'll be in the report, so you can dig into that, and you'll see how that backs up some of the broad numbers here.
Great, thank you. Do you, I was just, just in case it informs any other, because you said it was so different than your normal approach, do you often, in the full report on the economic impact analysis, you mentioned that you reviewed the summary findings of the Spurs consultants' economic impact analysis? Do you nor, is that normal practice for you to, or would you traditionally do an independent economic impact analysis?
Either or. I will say, a lot of our clients that are, or potential clients that have spent money on a study are, are excited about spending money on another same study, so we get asked to comment on, are the assumptions reasonable, et cetera, et cetera? It's not a business we like to be in. We, we have a rigorous study process for anything we do. No stone is left unturned in terms of understanding what the demand is. I assume their consultants did the same thing. So I
Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we didn't do the study, so I, I don't know. So we don't typically like to opine on another firm's study, because we don't know the level of research, but there is a, a thread of a link between one of our recent studies and their study. One-eighty-nine, two-twenty-five. Okay? These are measuring the exact same metric in two different markets, both for a brand-new NBA arena. And they came out close enough that we were willing to say, we don't think that particular result is unreasonable, we're willing to put it in our report. There are cases where we have not done that, and this, this particular case, we felt it was, was appropriate.
And in case it answers anyone else's question, did you review the Spurs consultants' January twenty-twenty-five economic impact analysis? Not the summary findings, but the, not the full report that we were provided?
No, it's fairly recently landed on our desk. I did go through it, and again, I did confirm their net new direct spending number. That's the hook to, to, to our reports. And so I think that's solid. I have not read the entire study in detail. I'll turn it over to Ben Grzel.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. I know we've spent a little bit of time here going through presentations. Mine's not too long, so I'm going to recap, really spending some more time on the structure for the arena itself, and trying to go into a little bit more detail in terms of how that is working, or how we're proposing that that works. So again, just a quick update, not anything new on this slide, but just demonstrating that the cost of the arena is still projected between one-point-three billion and one-point-five billion dollars. Obviously, more work to be done here in terms of narrowing that range. We're working, as you can see, towards the lower end of that range at one-point-three billion dollars, but we've got more work to do as that proceeds forward. The three primary funding entities here are the Spurs, the San Antonio Spurs with five-hundred-million-dollar contribution, plus a obligation to cover any cost overruns once that project budget is set. A county financing that would yield three-hundred-and-eleven million dollars towards the facility. And then our range is what you saw a couple of weeks ago, at three-hundred-and-fifty-million to five-hundred-million dollars. I'm going to take each of these and just break them down just a little bit more detail. So the first two, when we talk about the Spurs, this is a, coming from the team, so this will be debt that the team will take on to make a five-hundred-million-dollar contribution to the cost of the arena. And again, I mentioned, they're, they're going to be required to cover any cost overruns. As you saw yesterday, the county did call for a venue tax election in November. The venue tax is really comprised of two different elements. There is currently a one-point-seven-five percent hot tax for any hotels within the county. In that action that the court took yesterday, they're proposing to increase that to the two, to two percent, which is the maximum capacity left under state law. So that was part of the action they took yesterday. The other part of the venue tax is the motor vehicle rental tax, or M V R T. So those two components broadly make up the venue tax. The county would use, if that election is successful in November, they would use those two funding sources to do a bond issue that would yield that three-hundred, three-hundred-and-eleven million-dollar contribution to the arena. And, and of course, there are two propositions. And, and of course, there are two propositions. I'm only talking about the one for the arena. There is a second one associated with the Frost Bank Center and, and the rodeo. Before I go into the city's proposed financing structure, I want to talk a little bit more about some of the elements that make that up. You've seen a version of this slide before. This is the project finance zone, really, really important tool for us that the state has allowed us to have access to. This allows us to capture the state's hotel-associated revenue for 30 years within a zone. The zone we've created is in that circle you see on, on, on the map there. To be real clear, this doesn't affect anybody in terms of how much you pay. This is a redirection of state revenues into qualified projects. So there's no increase in the rate, it's just capturing dollars that can be reinvested into facilities that support that industry. That hotel-associated revenue is made up of the state's hot tax, state sales tax, state's mixed beverage sales tax, and the state's mixed beverage grocery receipts tax. That only applies to business, to the hotels, or to businesses that operate in those hotels. The council did create this zone in May of 2025, so that's our base year. So starting in 2026, we will collect the state's hotel-associated revenue incremental growth for 30 years. Think about it like a TERS a little bit. It's going to start small because it's incremental, but it will grow over time. And again, it's going to be a really important resource as we move forward and talk about funding facilities like the arena, like the convention center, like the Alamo Dome. The designation that we made with that, with that creation of the zone in 2020, in May, was a convention center complex. That was important because it gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of how we can use these PFZ dollars among those three facilities, the convention center, the arena, and the Alamo Dome. There's a little bit, I'll just call it a shot clock, we've talked about it before, under state law, once you create the zone, you have five years to commence a project. If you don't commence a project that you've designated, the zone automatically dissolves. If we begin a project, the way it's set up, it stays, the, the zone and the dollars stay with that project. We want flexibility to move it, so we re-designated the zone as a complex, and that allows us to have flexibility to move those dollars among these three facilities. Wanted to touch on a little bit the hemisphere TERS. So this is a map of the existing TERS boundaries. It was created in February of 2017. It is bounded on the east by IH 37. Kind of follows on the south, Cesar Chavez. You see it kind of wrap around the GSA properties, or General Services Administration properties, to the south, and then to the north, just slightly beyond Commerce Street, and then to the west, a little bit beyond South Alamo Street. So that's kind of the core of the district. It just doesn't include the east side of the freeway where the Alamo Dome is and the Alamo Dome parking lots are. But wanted to give you a little bit of context in terms of the TERS, what's in it today. Again, created in 2017 with a base value of 43.1 million dollars. So that means we're going to capture anything incremental above that in the TERS for property taxes. Over the last eight years, we've captured 121.7 million dollars in incremental property tax value or taxable value. That would, if you looked at it in 2025, the tax increment that went into the TERS is roughly $650,000. This is as of 2025. There is construction on the western end of the, the zone. We have the Zachary Hotel going in. That's not reflected here because that hasn't hit the tax roll yet. So there'll be a little bit of a bump once that comes online in the next couple of years. Let me talk a little bit about mixed-use development opportunities and what we have been doing when we talk about guarantees on new development. What you see shaded here on this slide are the opportunities around the arena for new development. These are the discussions we've been having with the Spurs around guarantees on new development that would then support a bond issue that we would use to make a contribution to the arena, would be one of the funding sources. Arena there, and then you can see it picks up the current General Services Administration properties, the current admin building, federal admin building there, just north of Cesar Chavez, and then the two parking lots to the south. And I'm going to come back and talk about new development in a second on a subsequent slide. So when we look at those elements, how do we create a city financing to make a contribution to the arena, and how do we pay for that debt? This structure uses rent from the Spurs, so they would have to pay a lease rent for the new arena. That would be one of the revenue streams we would use to repay the debt. We would use the hemisphere TERS, both the existing, not a lot, lot in there currently, but the new development would be a key piece of that guarantee. The property taxes from that new development just inside of that TERS, along with the ground leases for that private development, would also be a revenue source that we would use for the bond financing or to repay the debt. And then the project financing zone, which are the state revenues that I mentioned a minute ago. All of those sources combined, we would then use to leverage into a bond issue that would allow us to make a contribution to the arena. In terms of some key terms that I'll just highlight, as we talk about next steps and, potentially moving towards the negotiation of a term sheet, there's a couple of things I want to highlight here. One, total cost of arena will obviously be important. I talked about, we're still at a range. We need to tighten that range up a little bit and make sure we understand what we're getting in terms of an arena facility for the cost of that project. We talked about the Spurs contribution to the arena, they've talked about that, 500 million plus cost overruns. Spurs arena rent, as we have talked with them, we are asking them to pay more rent than they pay today, and we also want to include an escalation factor so that it increases over time. Guaranteed new development and taxable value. I'm going to pause for a second and just try to explain a little bit. I know there's been a lot of conversation around the contribution to the arena from the Spurs, and then this new development piece. So as I went over on the previous slides, there's a 500 million dollars, they're going to borrow money, the Spurs, and contribute 500 million dollars to the cost of the arena facility, their contribution. For our financing, we're also asking them to guarantee new development inside of the hemisphere TERS. That slide that I showed with the, the, I'm going to call it phase one piece of that, that was highlighted there, where there are opportunities for new development. What we have been talking with them about, and based on our conversations with them, along with information we've gotten from their consultant, that does work in the real estate area, RCL Co., they provide us a, a development schedule, we're looking at 1.4 billion dollars in taxable value over a 12-year period. So that's 2030 to 2042. And I'm going to break that down into two phases, because it's important from a financing perspective. Phase one is about 500 million dollars of that 1.4 billion, we're asking them to put in at the same time the arena goes in. So fast forward to 2028, if this all moves forward, we're getting ready to do a bond issue, we would want to see, and the developer would have to have, along with the Spurs, they would have to be ready to proceed on that first phase of new development. That would be a condition of us moving forward with a bond financing. If they're not ready to move forward, we don't issue bonds. So that's the first part. It's important because it helps us from a credit perspective, in terms of how bondholders look at that debt, knowing that that development will go in at the same time as the arena. That's an important piece. The second piece, I'm going to lump into phase two. So I mentioned 2030 to 2042, 12-year period, first phase, roughly 500 million dollars in taxable value goes in with the arena. That happens by about 2031, 2032. That remaining 10-year period would be that remaining 900 million dollars in taxable value. That's what we're asking them, the Spurs, and their developer to guarantee. Two pieces. One, once we land on the development schedule for that 12-year period, it's a guarantee on that development schedule. And then secondly, we want to guarantee on the projected revenue, once we calculate that at that point in time, we want to guarantee on that revenue stream. Why is that important? Because we're using it to backstop these bonds. This is how we're going to pay these bonds. We don't want a scenario where we think the thing's going, we, we think a piece of property's going to come on the tax roll at 400 million, and it comes on at 250 million. We don't, we're not going to take that risk. We're asking them to take that risk. So I wanted to separate and spend a little bit of time separating the component of the, the direct cash funding that will go into the arena versus the guarantees that we're asking for on the new development around the arena over that 12-year period. Obviously, another key term that many of you have spent a lot of time talking about is community benefits. During the last presentation, the city manager talked about a recommended approach where we negotiated, negotiate a dollar commitment over 30 years. We've had discussions with the Spurs on that, they're open to that approach, but we've got more work to do on that as well. And then I'll wrap up here on this slide. So really, with part of this briefing, we're asking for you, for city council, for, for city council direction on the two points you see here on the slide. Direction to the city manager to share a term sheet with the Spurs for a proposed deal for the downtown arena under the structure that has been presented today that I just went over. And then direction to the city managers to negotiate the term sheet with the Spurs for consideration by you all later this month. So those are the two points we'd like to get your feedback and direction on today. So Mayor and council members, that wraps up our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ben, can you go, the previous slide, the, the key city terms? So when we talked about the guaranteed new development and taxable value, I know you just mentioned 1.4 billion. The only thing that we have from the Spurs though, right, is, and sometimes you've just got to speak 78245, and that's a bag of cash, which is 500 million, and then 500 million in guaranteed development. That's the la, plus the 60, 60 million in, in community benefits agreement, right? That's what we have on paper from the Spurs, correct?
So Mayor, there's two pieces to that. So there was a letter that the Spurs provided two weeks ago, I think, roughly, that referenced the 500 million dollar contribution plus the new development at 500 million. What we have been working within this, with the Spurs on, and our discussions have been, what I described, the 1.4 billion. And then what we have from their consultant is a, I'm going to call it preliminary development schedule for that 12-year period that gets to 1.4 billion dollars over 12 years. It has a mix of hotel use, office space, housing, and retail embedded in that. That's preliminary. It will change once we get a developer there. But to your point, Mayor, that part will have to be solidified in a term sheet if, if, if this all moves forward.
But at this point, the only thing we have on paper in terms of guaranteed development from the Spurs is the 500, right, and their, their physical contribution, and then the 500 in guaranteed development. And we asked them, I think we talked about, we asked them to put the 1.4 billion in writing, and we have not received that. Is that correct?
As a follow-up to the letter from two weeks ago? No, I have not received a follow-up on that.
Okay. So these numbers then are what we would like, but it's not necessarily what the Spurs have agreed to, correct?
Um, I would-
Unless the Spurs would like to speak.
Mayor, for your record, Bobby Pettis, San Antonio Spurs. Mayor, council, thank you for the time. Really appreciate all the extra work you guys have done on this. Mayor, we have delivered a schedule, and that development schedule that includes 1.4 billion, we will agree to. And in this ongoing discussion we've had with your team, with your team, it's two phases. 2031 has been pointed out is that first approximately 500 million dollar schedule. The second phase through 2042 is the balance of it. Cameron Pollak's here today. He'll address the body as he speaks. He's happy to come up now and share more numbers with you, but that is part of the process in the proposed schedule. Now, I'll also address, Mayor, the, the method in which we got the request to put it in writing, we've had a lot of meetings with your team. We have shared schedules, documents, proposals, very in-depth, and had hours and hours of conversations. And in those verbal conversations, we have committed not only to the 500 million by 2031, we've also committed to the higher amount that Ben's talked about through 2042. So I, I do want to be clear, I, I don't want to step away from the dais, I'll answer your questions, of course. I don't want to step away from the dais and leave the impression that we have not made that representation, because we have, and will continue to, and we hope that after this discussion today, we can finalize the term sheet with your internal lawyers, your external lawyers, they can work with ours, and we'll bring something in front of you on August 21st so we can have action.
Great. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that, because I know we asked, I think, yesterday evening for that in writing and did not, and did not receive it. So thank you.
Mayor, for clarity, we've provided that schedule probably a month ago. And so it's, it's been discussed in great detail. And even prior to the issuance of Peter's letter, that 2031 number of 500 million dollars has been conceptually agreed to by us, and as well as the balance of the development has been tentatively agreed to by us. I think in order to further the conversation, we're asking for that direction from council to the manager, and the city attorney, and Ben, so we can get this into a final L O I.
City manager, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor. So let's just, let's just level set here. The, your question about the 500 million dollar guaranteed development in the letter, and the reconciliation between development schedules that we have had from the Spurs, I think the difference is, is that beyond, beyond getting to actual term negotiations and into a term sheet, that's the gap that exists right now. Ben has, as, as he said in his presentation, we've had the development schedule in our, in our conversations with the Spurs. Fact of the matter is, is that from our perspective, in any scenario that we run, that development perspective and those assumptions in the term sheet, that guaranteed revenue or taxable value is not going to be half a billion. From our perspective, it's going to be 1.4. So sharing documents and, and comparing them to letters, that's where the gap is. And I think, I think that really is to the point of, we, we need to negotiate that term sheet, lay out those actual terms with the contractual language, not spreadsheets or so forth, but just what is the guarantee? What are the dollar amounts? When do they need to be done by? And who's going to back them up? So.
I know we also have a presentation, or at least the gentleman is here who did the stone analysis regarding the Spurs. Again, this, my colleagues, and I just received this yesterday, but if there's something that that person would like to share regarding their analysis, because as CSL mentioned, they did not review it in depth.
Mayor, I'm going to have a follow-up. David Stone also signed up as a group, and he has nine minutes, but I think David's ready to present. David's in the room. Cameron Pollak has also signed up as a group, and so, subject to the chair, they can come up right now and share some information with you regarding our economic impact study, which, again, I'll add that to the list, of some of the collaboration. I think your CSL expert laid that out, that David Stone has had conversations and discussions, and Cameron Pollak, who's also been present, he's with RCL Co., and has been part of our team for some time. So they're here today, subject to your approval.
Yeah, David Stan, David Stone. Please. Yeah.
Cameron, you're first.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Cameron Pavelic. As was mentioned, I'm a principal with RCL Co., a real estate advisory firm. We've been working with the Spurs as it relates to the mixed-use districts surrounding the arena, specifically as it relates to the tax increment, as well as the, the development partner selection. While I'm working on this on a professional capacity, this is deeply personal to me. I was born and raised in San Antonio, and while my professional work with RCL Co. has taken me across the country, I can say without hesitation, San Antonio is the most culturally-rich, community-driven city I've ever seen. I want to start by recognizing the fiscal challenges that have been laid out before this body, and the, the understandable skepticism that has been expressed. I share your belief that any public investment must deliver measurable, accountable returns, especially in a time of tight budgets and community need. I wanted to use my time to offer a perspective on how the current framework under discussion addresses the key concerns raised under this chamber, and how it has accountability at its core. First, let me start by addressing one of the most common misconceptions up front. This proposal does not raise taxes on San Antonio residents, nor does it pool existing resources from essential city services. The current framework envisions the projected funding through, as discussed previously, a recapture of state hotel occupancy tax, new taxes generated from the sports and entertainment district, private contributions, and other project-specific revenue streams tied to the development. This is not about shifting money away from existing programs, it's about generating new revenue from new activity tied directly to the project, an outcome that simply wouldn't be possible without the Spurs acting as the anchor and the catalyst. Secondly, there's a perception that this development doesn't support core public services. Respectfully, that's inaccurate. In addition to the TERS, the county hot, the PFZ, and other arena funding mechanisms that have already been discussed, the- other arena funding mechanisms that have already been discussed, the Sports and Entertainment District enabled by the proposed arena is projected to generate more than $580 million of revenue for various city entities, or organizations: university health system, Alamo Community College, VIA, the Convention Center in Expansion, arts and culture programs, and many other critical community services. Additionally, the development is projected to generate approximately $150 million of additional funding for Bear County, in addition to the County Hot, as well as, as well as $150 million in additional funds for the state of Texas, in addition to the PFZ. These are direct public benefits that impact lives every day. Far from draining public resources, this project helps fund long-term investment on public ecosystem that supports health, education, transportation, and mobility. Third, I want to address the, the core question that, Mayor, you brought up here, which is the guarantees. I recognize that these kind of projects have historically led to overpromising and underdelivering. There's a history of it across the country. What makes this proposal different is that the structure currently being discussed, in addition to the Spurs' financial commitments to the arena itself, is also the mechanism that Ben discussed previously for the Spurs and its partners to backstop TERS revenues, and commitments to make ground lease payments even if surrounding development phases take longer to materialize. So in addition to their contributions to the arena, the community benefits agreement, the Spurs and their partners are committing the $500 million in the surrounding development for that first phase, and the 1.4 billion in total investment at build-out. These are guarantees that the Spurs and their partners are making around this development. So when it's, when it's asked whether these funds are real, these funds are intended to be guaranteed and written on paper for all to see. This, this means that regardless of the ultimate build-out, the structure requires that the incremental tax revenues projected to flow into the TERS are guaranteed. The tax revenue is not dependent on market timing. It is built into the agreement. While I understand the details still need to be worked out, the core principles of the proposal represent a serious commitment to ensure public obligations are met, and in my professional opinion, the proposed structure is built on a long-term alignment between the city, the Spurs, and your future partners. This is what accountability looks like, this public-private partnership. And the Spurs and the city of San Antonio are working to set a new benchmark for future P3s across the country. Lastly, this land has been vacant, vacant for decades, generating no tax revenue. Not for a lack of ambition, but because it lacked a catalytic anchor willing to make long-term financial commitments necessary to overcome the challenges of a tertiary market. The Spurs are that anchor. But they're far more than just a sports franchise. They're a San Antonio institution with over 50 years of civic engagement. Their involvement in this project brings a level of credibility, momentum, and investment that few others can, and helps bring the capital markets to this project to make this investable. The key point is this: without the Spurs, this large land block likely stays dormant for years to come with limited public benefit. But through this partnership and with the Spurs, it becomes a vibrant mixed-use district with public benefit built into the foundation. This isn't about choosing between an arena and core public services. It's about leveraging a thoughtful and well-structured opportunity to create lasting public value without sacrificing existing services. What's being contemplated here is a model that protects public dollars, provides long-term economic alignment and returns, and places community, community benefit at its core. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll go into the public comment section.
Your honor, would you like to hear from Stone Planning?
Sure, please. Thank you.
Thank you all. My name is David Stone. My firm is Stone Planning. I have been working in the planning of sports and entertainment, largely sports and entertainment facilities for over 25 years. Some recent work has included the NBA's newest arena, the Intuit Dome in Inglewood outside of LA, and the NHL's newest arena, Climate Pledge Arena in Seattle, both on behalf of those respective cities. What I've been asked to do for the Spurs is an economic and fiscal impact study for the past operations of the team and arena at the Frost Bank Center since 2002, and the future operations, including the ongoing operations of the Frost Bank Center and a new arena. We've looked at it from both the city's perspective and the county's perspective. I'm maybe, of course, going to focus on the city numbers here, but just want to quickly mention that the county numbers are relatively similar. The spending numbers at the county level are slightly higher. The tax numbers are different just because of different taxes at the city and county level, particularly as they relate to arena-related spending, and the jobs numbers are similar. But again, I'll focus on the, on the city-level numbers here. I'm glad John gave his economic impact 101, so I don't have to, and I'll just focus on the numbers here. I understand you all have a, recently got a copy of my full study. I'll focus on some of the high-level numbers, some of the conclusions from the study. So really, this page in, I'll break it up into three sections. The first one at the top, actually, I'll stop there for a second. We looked, well, I mentioned, we looked at the past operations since 2002, when the Frost Bank Center opened, which is, we looked at 20 seasons, which doesn't include two COVID-related seasons, and the most, most recent basketball season, because we were completing our study during that season. So from 2002 through the 2023, 2024 season, again, without two COVID years, and then the future scenario with a new arena folded in. The top part of this page, which is the orange numbers, looks at the cumulative 20-year impacts, the net new spending to the city, which is spending from, as John kind of talked about in his overview, spending from outside of the city coming into the city at over $9 billion. The resulting tax impact is $58 million, and these are city-level taxes only, everything from sales taxes to hotel taxes, to taxes for education, transit, et cetera. That is, again, cumulative over the 20 seasons we looked at. If I go down to the lower-left of the page, in the black numbers and black text, that is a single-year average based on the last four years, again, throwing out the two COVID-related years. But for those four years, an average of about $578 million of net new spending to the city, and $3.7 million in new taxes to the city. We have numbers for hotel, 21,000 new hotel room nights, approximately 1,000 jobs to local residents. Then shifting over to the right side, compares those numbers to the future scenario, again, ongoing operations of the Frost Bank Center, plus a new arena. That $578 million in new spending to the city increases to nearly $900 million. Again, this is one year, the first year of the new arena's operations, which we have projected to, usage, events, attendance, increasing over time. So this is the first year where, again, the, the event usage numbers are lower than they would be in some of the out-years, but increasing to almost $900 million, an increase, an incremental increase of over $300 million from the current scenario. Taxes, city-level taxes increasing to 4.2 million. The jobs, a modest increase to about 1,100 from 1,000. The hotel, hotel room nights increasing significantly. And the bottom of this slide is, that kind of reddish ribbon, is to indicate the possibility of hosting an NBA All-Star Weekend here in San Antonio, which has not been a possibility in the past due to the rodeo's presence in the Frost Bank Center in February. That $300 million number is just to show what Indianapolis, which hosted the All-Star Weekend last year, so 2024, two All-Star Weekends, I'm sorry, two years ago, two All-Star Weekends ago, their estimate of the economic impact to Indianapolis was $300 million. Oh, one last thing to say. These numbers all focus on the ongoing annual operations of the arena, slash arenas, plural. We're not showing here, but it is in the report, the one-time construction impacts from the construction project of the arena, which, based on local participation, would be in the hundreds of millions of dollars for local companies and thousands of jobs for local residents. So that is my time. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Stone, I briefly looked at your analysis. Your analysis assumes a 1.3 billion-dollar arena. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay. When you go back to the, can you bring up that slide, please? His slide that he just shared. Well, and the question is the same. How do these numbers change if it is a different cost arena, 1 billion or 950? Should we just reduce that by a third, for example?
I would, I would change them by the same percentage, yes.
By that same percentage? Okay. So we changed each, each of these numbers, obviously minus NBA?
Assuming, oh, sorry. Assuming the local participation stays the same, yes.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. We have several folks signed up to speak, and I will just go down this list. Each folk, each person will have two minutes to speak. Two minutes, please. All individuals will have two minutes to speak, and a group of three or more will have a total of six minutes. A written comment may be submitted to the city clerk for distribution to the council. The playing of recordings is not permitted. You may use or cede your time to someone else, but not both. If you are ceding your time or receiving someone else's time, let me know, because they must be on the list and present. So the first person is Nathan Whitman, followed by Jenny Carnes.
Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you for having these debates. Just wanted to make a few points. As a local businessman who employs folks here in San Antonio and is also working here in San Antonio, one thing that's been mentioned is that's a project would only bring low-wage jobs. Well, the only thing I would submit to that is, well, where else would the additional jobs come from? And why would those wages be any higher? If we, the city council is going to be debating on this project, not on raising wages. And so I submit that by bringing additional jobs into the city, that we're going to create a competitive market that could in turn have the wage effect that people are looking for. I would also admit that, as everyone knows, investing in something is never comfortable. Whether you're going to be purchasing a car, you're going to be investing in the stock market, it comes with risk every time. But without investing and without change, there's no possibility of growth. Your money's just going to sit where it is. It's never going to grow. Your car's just going to continue to devalue unless you're putting or investing money into it. In downtown San Antonio, I believe, is a strong return on investment that benefits the entire community. This, this project will be enjoyed by all San Antonio, as well as the economic impact. As a business operator downtown, and someone that lives downtown, a citizen of San Antonio for many years, I support the continued process of this project.
Jenny Carnes, followed by Elena Wells, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones, city council members, and city leadership. My name is Jenny Carnes, and I am the president and CEO of your 41-year-old nonprofit, San Antonio Sports. Our mission is to transform this community through the power of sport, with healthier kids and families, places to play, and events that impact. Which is why, as a citizen of Council District 10, and a passionate advocate for San Antonio, through the efforts of our organization, I strongly believe in and support the Sports and Entertainment District to include a new downtown arena for our beloved San Antonio Spurs. Spurs Sports and Entertainment have long been partners of our organization through board engagement, financial contributions to our NCAA Final Four hosting obligations, supporting our youth programs, and now partnering with our San Antonio Sports All-Star Basketball High School Series. With that said, it's not just what SSNE is doing to support San Antonio sports. They are doing it on their own for our community through the efforts of Spurs give, the refurbishment of over 19 local basketball courts and parks, and their vision around opening the old practice facility to serve as a community impact hub, providing countless resources. I truly believe that the time is now for all of us to come together to ensure that the Sports and Entertainment District gets across the finish line, and not just for a new Spurs arena and the transformation of my home away from home at the Alamo Dome, but for the future growth and betterment of our city with generational impact to come. I would like to thank Mayor Jones, members of our city council, Judge Peter Sekai, and county commissioners, along with SSNE, for seeing the importance of this ambitious vision, and taking our moment in time to do what is best for San Antonio through the transformational power of sport. Thank you for time, thank you for your time, and go Spurs, go.
Elena Wells, followed by Charles Bram, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones, city council members, and city leadership. My name is Elena Wells. I'm a proud San Antonio native, a resident of District 9, and the executive director for the San Antonio Local Organizing Committee, most recently for the NCAA Men's Final Four. First, I want to thank you all, along with Judge Peter Sekai, county commissioners, and Spurs Sports and Entertainment ownership for embracing this vision for our city. This April, during Final Four Weekend, we saw a glimpse of what a thriving sports and entertainment district could look like, not just for visitors, but for residents. Now imagine that same energy every weekend. At Salok, we work with national and international event organizers to bring major events to San Antonio. The NCAA events alone have generated nearly $1 billion in local economic impact over the past 27 years, and there are more on the horizon. Event organizers consistently prioritize three things: quality hotels, memorable experiences for fans and student athletes, and first-class venues. Our walkable downtown with the Alamo Dome, Convention Center, and Hemisphere, all within a half-mile radius, is a major competitive advantage. Expanding that footprint with a new arena, a theater, and continued investment in our existing venues, like the Alamo Dome, will open the door for even more world-class events. These events bring more than just visitors. They bring invaluable media exposure, showcasing San Antonio on a global stage. As was noted earlier today, with increasing competition across Texas and the nation, this project is more important than ever. It directly responds to feedback that we've heard from event organizers, and ensures that San Antonio remains a contender for premier sporting and entertainment events. We're excited to continue to build on our reputation for delivering unforgettable experiences and to help lead this bold new step. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Bram, followed by Mateo Lopez.
Madam Mayor, councilman, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Project Marvel. As a major stakeholder in downtown San Antonio and developer of substantial properties here in town, I'd like to speak in the perspective of how that might influence my business and what I do in downtown. As you may know, I was one of the developers of the Thompson Hotel here in downtown, and undertaking a large project here as well currently. Wanted to touch on two broad perspectives that influence what I do every day. One of those is the competition that we face from other cities around the country, and their forward visions and their commitment to what they are doing in their cities to make them attractive to not only visitors, but investors, and how it might benefit the local community as well. If you look at other cities like Austin, Fort Worth, Oklahoma City, Denver, Charlotte, all of these cities have made major, major commitments to their downtown areas and what they're doing. You look at the brick- You look at the Brickyard in Oklahoma City, who would even imagine the commitment that they have made? It's just, it's massive. And if, if we don't, if we don't, as a city, take that same attitude, we're going to fall behind. And that affects us all. It affects our entire community. The other, the other issue that I deal with on a regular daily basis is that from the capital community, whether, whether you be talking about debt or investment or what it takes to grow, you are being looked at as a city and how you're looking for the future of that city. These are people that are putting large amounts of money behind you and into projects that you're doing, and you have to sell the city first. And so I think those are things that we need to keep in mind besides the detail of what we're looking at here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mateo Lopez, followed by Thomas Castillo.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones, Terry, Rick, members of the council. I have been a downtown ambassador for six years now, and as my good friends behind me can tell you, I have done all the jobs from landscaping to maintenance to pressure washing to, most recently, our Quality of Life team. But the, the job that I have had the most fun in doing has been our hospitality ambassadors, or what we call the P S Rs, Public Service Reps. And one of my favorite memories came actually a few months after I started working with Centro. It was at Alamo Plaza. Our ambassadors are in zones, so I had the Alamo Zone. And it was after dinner, and I was standing at the Alamo, and this big family, about ten or twenty kids and adults alike, and they exited, you have the Alamo on your left and the mall is to the right, and they exited the mall and came to the Alamo, and the kiddos are running around, and then the adults are looking at the, at the scenery. And the patriarch of their family actually came up to me, and he started asking me the questions, what is this place? What does it mean? And I started explaining our Texas history, our Alamo history, and he's smiling, and he actually kind of interrupted me and said, well, that's all well and good, but I've already, I know this stuff before. And I said, what am I, chopped liver? But I actually, I didn't say that, but I asked him, well, how did you learn about Texas history? And what he had told me is that his father, when the Alamo movie came out in nineteen sixties, he actually took his family from New Delhi to Texas, to San Antonio, just to come and see the Alamo, the real deal. And now him, the son that became the father, that became the patriarch, actually was continuing that tradition of taking his family to come see our city and to have me, a wet-behind-the-ears freshman ambassador, talking to this man and his family from several thousand miles, that perfect night when I punched in for work and was able to make that connection with them. And I think if Project Marvel, if we give them the tools to be successful, we can triple those hundreds of thousands of experiences that Centro has been creating for every single day, every single night since nineteen ninety-nine. Thank you very much.
Thomas Castillo, followed by Nick Valdez.
Hello. Sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. My name is Thomas Castillo. I have served as a Centro ambassador for nineteen years. I reside in District Five. My role, among others, my latest role, is data analyst. But the main role of Centro is to keep it clean, safe, and welcoming for everyone. I walk the streets every day, talk to residents, visitors, business owners. What I consistently hear is that people want a downtown that feels alive, but also feels cared for. The Sports and Entertainment District is about more than big events. It's about the public spaces in between Plaza, sidewalks, parks. Those are areas where people experience our city, and these are areas where we work hardest. This project needs more investment in those public spaces. It means better lighting, walkability, more reasons for people to stay and explore, and it brings pride to the places we already love. And it brings more people to love them too. My great example comes to mind. I was also at the Plaza, the Alamo Plaza, and I ran into a family of five. Father, big Spurs fan, came to see the Spurs, brought his whole family with him. And so instead of just the Spurs game, it became the Magic's Children Theater, the Alamo, the Market, Market Square, and the Riverwalk, which my supervisor reminds me that a hundred years ago, that was said to get filled up and turned into just completely paved over. So imagine that. But when down, my point is when downtown thrives, all of San Antonio benefits. As someone who serves on the front lines of downtown San Antonio every day, I support this district, and we're ready to help make it shine.
Nick Valdez, followed by Pat Frost. Pat Frost, please, followed by Frey Reyes. There's Pat, there's Pat. Okay.
Great. Good afternoon. My name is Pat Frost, and I'm chair of the Greater San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. And I am here to do thank yous, not you should. The person that did the best on the you should was in Sunday's San Antonio Express News Councilwoman's Cars op-ed piece, and I encourage you to read it. I think all of you all, just like Bobby Pettis said, for all the time you all have put into this and the due diligence, so appreciate it. I also thank your city staff. It is the best I have ever been around of both private and nonprofit. Fantastic. Listen, I do believe they have a great recommendation for you. I want to also thank the Spurs. The investment that they have committed to our community just is staggering. We need to remember the Spurs are now approximately half-owned by out-of-towners because of COVID. As me, as a season ticket holder, I went over a year without having to spend a dime, but yet those players got all the money and had to invest in with these, with these folks, which I understand are very good partners, particularly because they are supporting the Holtz in this major investment. And Peter, yesterday, Commissioner's Court described how much more that is than other small-market N B A teams. I also want to give a thank you to Cops Metro. You all listened to them, and I agree with it, of taking the needed infrastructure needs of downtown around Hemisfer Park to put that in the bond issue where you're going to look at issues all around the city. And I do believe that is the right process. I want to also give a thank you to county staff and commissioners, and of course, Judge Sakai, with their efforts of being able with twenty-five percent of this, if the voters approve, giving the voters the opportunity. But also want to thank the San Antonio Stock Show and Rodeo with their commitment to make sure that the area that the Spurs are leaving will continue to thrive. Finally, I want to say thank you, hopefully to all of you all on August twenty-first, after you pass the term she presented. Thank you.
Frey Reyes, followed by Charles Daniels. Charles Daniels, followed by Molly J.
As a forty-year resident of San Antonio, today I have something simple to say, and may my poor words and tongue not get in the way. As a tribute to Miss Emily Edwards, let what I say be heard. No, I speak not for others here or there, but for those now passed who can no longer speak, who gave their lives and honor, who gave us history to share. May this remind you of what was soon missed. History is weak. Tis prosperity over uniqueness of history. Take care. Remember, this city is one small, but full of friends. Seek what was large and far and historic way. Where's we peek? There to see how it is when big salaries are the guide. Do they care? Watch millions be spent for a third sports site, to whose delight? When a symphony goes dark, a Philharmonic struggles in a survival rite, while an institute of culture is torn down. Why? For another ballpark? Not with any real plan, except to assure that the rich have their way. Where are those who would move a hotel a half a mile to save its place in history? I say, I see no plan, but prosperity and profits high to share. Does it really matter who is made to pay? The rich planners will get their share, so prepare. Remember, tourists find here that history is alive. In a big city, in a big city, a small town still survives. I see now how those who listen may frown.
Thank you, sir.
Soon, big screens of ads may cover the town. I'd rather see horses and streetcars.
Sir?
'Tis only a hope.
Sir, you can, so you can provide your comments, your written comments.
One sentence.
Sir, to be fair to everybody else.
One sentence.
One sentence, okay.
One sentence. The time is here to heed, heed the call of S O S. Save old San Antonio. Thank you.
Molly J, followed by Mark Wolfarth.
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Mayor Jones. Councilpersons, thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm standing, looking at all of you, wondering how and why are you debating about a basketball court when we are all in severe federal duress? And many poor, hard-working Americans of all levels of society in every area of the city and county are being neglected, and they need your help. The local and the county level is the only place of help that we can get. We cannot get help, obviously, from the state because we have people running from there, hiding, so they don't give the federal administration what they're legally trying to get. We're not getting any help from the federal level. Please, please pay attention to the actual needs of all your constituents. Please. No one needs a basketball court. We need housing. We need shelter in place. We need pallet home villages. We need you to work with Commissioner Calvert. Please, stop this sacrificing people's lives and livelihoods and housing for a basketball court. Please. And I'm sorry, Councilwoman Nibaleez, for your experiences. I apologize.
Mark Wolfarth, followed by Gemma Kennedy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us. I was going to memorize this, but I'm not that smart. My name is Mark Wolfarth. I'm a partner with Danny Bedevita, Sabanow Group Construction Company, small business, small minority business, based in Central Business District, San Antonio, two thirty-seven West Travis, just a couple blocks from here. We employ twenty-nine full-time, eighteen part-time employees in San Antonio, and we all live in city in your districts. I personally live in District Eight. Born and raised in San Antonio, lived in Austin about ten or twelve years, came back in two thousand and one. We've done numerous projects for you, the city of San Antonio, and the Spurs dating back two thousand and one. We appreciate the projects the city and the Spurs have given us to help us grow a community and employ more people and thus pay more taxes. We love our community. We love our Spurs. I personally am a fourth-generation San Antonio and Texan, raising a fifth generation in San Antonio. My family and money stays here in San Antonio. Over the past twenty-five, thirty years, we have seen Austin grow economically over San Antonio. We remain stagnant over that period. Only our basic services, which obviously is the city's main purpose, has been served. It's been years since we have landed a large project such as Toyota in two thousand and three and what a win that was. We all want social services and programs such as education, educating our children or future, but without economic intake to do so would be, would not be sustainable. We need a forward-thinking mayor, city council, to think economically, not just for today or even this year, but for our future, the next twenty to fifty years. This project does that. This will be a tremendous opportunity and benefit the entire city. This project will benefit tourism and thus expand local income to intake through hotel occupancy, sales tax, and small business expansion. The new state-of-the-art venue will also serve for long-term. In addition to just the games, the new venue could host concerts, esports, and other major events throughout the city. The Spurs are deeply woven into the city's identity. San Antonio has a rich history and diverse community, and the team has become a unifying force that transcends race, age, and background. In conclusion, ah, we're good. Spurs are family. I appreciate it.
So, looks like Gemma Kennedy, Susan Strawn, and Barry Cogburn. Okay. Do you have six minutes? Thank you.
Great, thank you. So my name is Susan Strawn. I'm a resident of District One. I thought I would have nine, so I'm going to try to go as fast as possible. You all have a copy of my presentation in your materials. So I'm here on behalf of No Project Marvel, which is a grassroots, grassroots coalition of several large community organizations that oppose all or parts of Project Marvel. We are all united, though, in asking the mayor and city council to postpone taking any action towards funding under proceeding with Project Marvel until an impartial cost-benefit analysis has been completed and presented to the public. We want a serious, independent cost-benefit analysis, including costs, benefits, risk analysis, consideration of the benefits and costs of alternative uses of these funds, and separate consideration of all of that with respect to every element in the plan. We should not be lumping the Convention Center together with the Spurs Arena, together with the Woods Courthouse. We need to independently analyze whether we need to be spending all of this money for, for each of those. We want straight facts, not a sales pitch from City Hall. And I will say, I went to the District One meeting. We had two questions taken. We were out of time, and everyone had submitted questions on cards. Two were taken, and we moved on to the drawing part of the exercise. So I would not say that we had a good give and take on, at that meeting. But we need to have a real, straight, the city, City Hall should be presenting us with neutral facts, not a sales pitch. That's the bottom line. That community engagement needs to be based on the cost-benefit and alternatives when we get it, including a no-action possibility. And we want no ballot proposals or debt issued until the cost-benefit study is done and all of the trade-offs are understood. So we love the Spurs. Everyone loves the Spurs. But research shows, and it's pretty unequivocal, that arenas don't bring economic development. So we have to ask, if we put this money into this arena, do we love the Spurs more than we love good jobs? Do we love it than more than clean water, affordable housing, arts and culture, health and education? How much is that intangible that we all know goes along with having an N B A team? I will point out that Austin does not have an N B A team, and Austin is doing much better than we are economically. But how much are the Spurs worth? And we've heard Mr. Holtz say that we're, this is a small market, and they need much more public financing. But I will also point out that the Spurs are in the top ten most profitable franchises in the N B A, despite being in a small market. And that's largely because of the sweet deal that they've gotten from public financing throughout their time here. Next. Nobody loves a convention center. So this is the Convention Center, and I'm sorry about the misspelling. A I tells me it can't spell. And so apparently, it, it's true. I asked Chat G P T, why can't you spell? And it said, sorry, we're not good at it. And so, but anyway, this is the blob of the Convention Center that is now eating all of, all of downtown. There's no intangible factor here. Research shows they almost all operate at a loss. Jobs are low-paid, part-time. If we are going to do this, expand this Convention Center, we need to see hard cost-benefit, not go Spurs, go kind of love, but hard economic benefits. not go Spurs-go kind of love, but hard economic benefits from doing this, from plowing seven hundred and fifty million dollars into keeping up with the Dallas and Houston and Austin. And we need to look at alternative uses. So I want to talk about some of the myths really quick. Myth number one, that there's no taxpayer money being used. Infrastructure bond is directly tax money. TERS is property tax. Millions have been spent and will be spent in planning, staff, security, consultants, management. Indirectly, project finance zone, hot tax, county venue tax. All of those have other uses that could go to support projects that are now being funded out of the general fund. So speaking of the infrastructure bond, it's about twenty million dollars a year in debt service. If we pass that, estimated fifteen percent to outstanding debt. Alternative uses, we could grow pre-KSA by twenty-five percent. We could fund a hundred and eighty new police officers. We could double the city's budget for aquifer protection. We could issue these other bonds. There are alternative uses for that money, which is money from the taxpayers. Myth number two, that the project finance zone can only be used for the convention center, Alamo Dome, and arena. That's not true. Related infrastructure. It can be used for related infrastructure, which includes all of the infrastructure that the city wants to issue a bond to pay for. So we could not pay for that with a bond. We could pay for that with money, bonds issued against the project, the, whatever it's called, the finance zone. So next. Myth number three, TERS. TERS is also taxpayer money. I haven't heard anything more about the Midtown TERS, so I'm assuming that that's dropped out of the equation. We're not going to use that. But you're talking about using the Hemisphere TERS. So again, TERS costs and benefits. Next. TERS takes property tax away from the general fund. It shifts costs to the other taxpayers. It's regressive. And talk about the risks. I think the, the money that they're expecting to get from the TERS and the Spurs' five-hundred-million-dollar guarantee is extremely aggressive. I would really like to see more about those numbers. The Midtown TERS is a two-billion-dollar tax increment at this point, and it's only generating twelve million dollars. So if they're projecting to get this much tax money out of, out of this one with a one-point-four billion twelve years from now, I think, I think we need to look harder at those numbers. So I don't have time to finish, but I would also say the hot tax is money that can goes, goes currently to all sorts of other things.
Ms. Strawn, you can submit these slides for the record. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
May I say one more sentence? If you're, if you're familiar with the, what's going on right now in Washington, D.C. with RFK and the, and the Commander's New Football Stadium, the city council there asked for and obtained an independent consultant report, a risk analysis that was separate from anything that the city bureaucracy did, or even the mayor's office, because there they have a strong mayor. And I think that that report was very enlightening, and I would encourage you all to do something like that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Jeff Webster, followed by Brett Finley.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Webster. I'm the president and CEO of the Greater San Antonio Chamber, a hundred-and-thirty-one-year-old organization representing approximately seventeen hundred businesses in our community, large and small, and in all four quadrants of our city, in every one of your districts. You know, there's a lot of conversation today about what, what could happen, what might happen, what we should do, what we can't do. But this is really about windows of opportunity. They don't come along often. Many of you just finished a campaign based on a window of opportunity. You made a decision to take a risk, maybe leave a job and take a new opportunity. We have an opportunity for economic development. We have an opportunity for economic opportunity for new entrepreneurs to start a business. We have an economic opportunity for businesses that are here in San Antonio to grow and hire. That money doesn't stay downtown. That goes to all corners of our city. I said last time I was here, this is generational. This is going to go beyond, when many of you will not be sitting at these chairs any longer and will be other, onto other task roles and opportunities, right? In nineteen sixty-two and sixty-three, people made a decision about the Hemisphere. In nineteen twenty-nine, they made a decision about our Riverwalk. We're asking you to make a decision about our future. I would ask, Madam Mayor and Council, please come back in two weeks. Let's have an agreement. Let's start moving forward with more details and find a solution to continue to invest in the future of San Antonio and those next generations. Mayor, thank you very much for your time.
Brett Finley, followed by Dan Manelli, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones, members of San Antonio City Council. My name is Brett Finley. I'm the president and CEO of the Metro SA Chamber. Alongside me is our two thousand and twenty-five chairman of the board, Rob Killen, along with several members of our board of directors and also just general members at large. We're here to publicly support, strong support, the, the Project Marvel Spurs Arena conversation here today. I'll start with just the economics. This is an incredibly impactful, and regardless of the multitude of billion dollars that the city stands to, to potentially be on the receiving end from, from additional tax revenue mechanisms, it's also thousands of jobs, construction, hospitality, the tourism sector. Those individual families, while they may be working down in San Antonio, they reside in each of your council districts. They're going to be supporting themselves and also their families to give a better quality of life. It's been well documented at this point that there's no tax increase. This is not taking existing dollars from the general fund to fund this project. That means that the multitude of challenges from animal control to transportation to housing, which has been discussed, that's not going to stand in, in contest to whether or not you support this item on August twenty-first. So please take that into consideration. It's, it's been talked about a lot that, you know, it's an either-or proposition. You can, you can still do this and govern a city. We can be compassionate, San Antonio, while also making smart, strategic, and transformational investments in the heart of our city. So please, we, we encourage you all to take that into consideration, to vote for this. And then finally, I'll close with a civic partner in the San Antonio Spurs. Over the last fifty years, they have demonstrated both on-court performance success, but also being out into the community. This reaffirms their commitment, and they've given you half a billion dollars and, and reasons why they want to choose San Antonio for the long term with an additional half a billion dollars in private development in the future. Again, we want to make sure that, just for so many generations to come, that San Antonio continues to be a destination of choice for corporate relocation, for those businesses, small, medium, and large scale, to be a part of this project and to choose San Antonio. Go Spurs, go, and thank you for your leadership.
Dan Manelli, followed by Father Jimmy Drennan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Dan Manelli. I live in District One and work in District Two, and I'm honored to speak with you today on behalf of the museum where I serve as CEO. The museum is San Antonio's Children's Museum, one of the most visited in the city with over four hundred thousand guests each year. I'm here today because the museum sits near the center of Broadway's Cultural Corridor on the east side, on the gateway to downtown. We recognize that what happens downtown will help shape the future of San Antonio as a destination environment. We support the proposal for the Downtown Sports and Entertainment District, knowing that its success will uplift everyone engaged in San Antonio's cultural, tourism, and education sectors. San Antonio is a place where families grow, communities thrive, and where culture isn't just the backdrop, it's the heartbeat of who we are. This proposal is a chance to strengthen both the quality of life for residents and our cultural identity that defines us. We believe this visionary path forward is one that keeps the Spurs rooted in San Antonio, celebrates our city's cultural identity through renewed venues and theaters, and thoughtfully plans for a seamless connectivity and movement that is essential to a thriving, growing downtown. Alongside iconic institutions like the Spurs, the Alamo, and our neighbors at the zoo, we weave the fabric of our city's culture. We welcome lifelong locals and first-time guests with equal enthusiasm. We want to thank Mayor Jones, the council, and Judge Sakai, and the, 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 excuse me, a little bit nervous here, and the county. It's an honor to be with you today. Thank you for including me.
Father Drennan, followed by Tim Morrow.
We are representing COPS Metro Alliance, so may we have the six minutes.
Father, who else has signed up with you?
These folks here, Mike Phillips and... No, they're not signed up, I'm sorry.
Okay. Two minutes, Father.
Okay. We want to begin by thanking you very much for allowing us to speak. Father Jimmy Drennan with COPS Metro Alliance. And we have great concern. We believe in economic development, and we want to see continued economic development for the city of San Antonio. But our concerns are this. Just today, I was watching the expressions of each and every one of you when you were finding out at this very meeting that there is still an economic impact study that needs to be presented to you from CSL. And you were saying, oh, that's still coming? And they're, they reported, yes. We do not have all the information. It is incredible that we would be asked, that you would be asked to move this forward to a, an election without having all the information. We know that the Spurs study, economic study, was done in January, but we have just received it. We deserve more. We deserve to be an informed city and an informed council and leadership of the city. It's very interesting to note that all of the public sessions that were done were done before any of this information was released. Why isn't the city of San Antonio given the opportunity, the citizens, to have that information so that they can make educated, well-informed decisions, recommendations, and ask questions? Why would we ever have a series of sessions for the citizens of San Antonio when you had not yet received the reports? We had not yet received the reports. It is inconscionable to expect the citizens of San Antonio to be treated this way. We are asking that you please postpone this vote. Allow us to be educated. Allow us to, to examine these studies, and we are demanding an independent economic study that has all of the facets presented to you, to you, Mayor, and to the citizens of San Antonio, so that we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Tim Morrow, followed by Sarah Karabias Rush, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Tim Morrow. I'm president and CEO of San Antonio Zoo, a place where San Antonio's, San Antonians have visited for over a hundred and eleven years. We are part of District One and District Two. I'm also the former chair of San Antonio Visitor Alliance, the current chair of Texas Travel Alliance, and I'm the vice chair of Visit San Antonio. I have been working in the tourism industry in San Antonio since nineteen ninety-one, starting as a lifeguard, watching pools, cleaning pathways and bathrooms, and working my way up through nineteen years at SeaWorld before taking on my role at the San Antonio Zoo ten years ago. Beyond tourism, I volunteer in the community, serving on boards and committees such as those as UTSA in the city of San Antonio, and I do all this because of my love for the city. I first moved to San Antonio as a second grader and instantly fell in love with the Spurs. I now take my children to Spurs games when I can and have enjoyed watching them grow up, cheering for San Antonio's only major league team. I can tell you that keeping the Spurs in a new arena downtown is critical for San Antonio for many reasons. One, great cities need great downtowns where people can live, work, and play. The Spurs and Project Marvel do that for our city. The, the economic impact the Spurs provide our city, the recognition our city gets from the Spurs around the country and around the nation. People know San Antonio because of the San Antonio Spurs. The quality of life this provides when corporations are looking to move to San Antonio, and that is a big one for operators such as San Antonio Zoo, the nonprofit. We depend on visitation and donations to grow and have a strong corp, having a strong corporate community is critical to our success, and that is magnified across all of the arts and cultural institutions in San Antonio. Tourism is critical for the success of San Antonio on a greater scale than our peers in Texas, which is why projects like the new arena, an updated Alamo Dome, and updated convention center, and more amenities for tourists and locals are so critical across a broad spectrum. In closing, I ask that you all work to build San Antonio through growth projects such as Downtown Arena and work to maximize the economic impact of these projects for the betterment, betterment of our community in all corners. I thank you, and I ask that you support staff moving forward with negotiations and returning to council with a negotiated term sheet in the next couple of weeks. I wanted to also mention the commanders, who I can't stand because I'm a Dallas Cowboy fan, and I'm glad someone brought them up. That's an example of a place that lost their team.
Sarah Karabias Rush, followed by Benito Ocovio.
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Karabias Rush, a proud District One resident and the president and CEO of Greater SATX Regional Economic Partnership. As the lead economic development organization for our ten-county Greater San Antonio region, our mission is to grow quality jobs for the people who live here today and those we will welcome in the future. Right now, San Antonio is a region on the rise. We're the fastest-growing job market in Texas and the third fastest in the nation. Wages are climbing faster here than anywhere else in the state. The average San Antonio worker now earns more than in cities like Las Vegas and Miami, and that is because of the investments we have made as a community in workforce development and education. And our jobs pipeline has never been stronger, with companies from around the world considering investing upwards of twenty thousand jobs in our pipeline today and fourteen billion dollars in capital investment. These potential jobs, when realized, will drive economic mobility for all San Antonio residents. That's momentum that we can't...
cities have chosen to invest in their future. What we're discussing here today is one such moment. San Antonio is already a city that's rich in history, culture, tradition, and business. And part of our challenge, and I think what seems to be coming together, is balancing both venue life and daily life in this downtown area. On a personal note, my wife and I are blessed that our three adult children have all chosen to stay in San Antonio. But we don't take that for granted, because Texas cities are competitive. And they would love to lure our children away to their job openings, their daily lives, their daily amenities. And on a professional note, what you just heard from Sarah was we spend a lot of time, energy, effort, resources, and money to recruit companies to come here. Part of our challenge is to balance business retention with business recruitment. Therefore, saying no is not an option. Doing nothing is not an option. Keeping the status quo is not an option. In raising our children, Christina and I have done what we believe is the best we can do to prepare our children for the future. The question is, is San Antonio willing to fight to keep them? I encourage you to support the Sports and Entertainment District, which includes the new arena for the Spurs. Thank you.
Jesse Costa, followed by Bill Brandell.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and council members. Thank you so much again for having us. Our input is definitely taken through you guys, and we really do appreciate that. You know, I'm speaking here as a downtown resident, as a young professional who actually chose to stay in San Antonio and build a career here in a city I call home. I grew up in District One as a child and now as an adult. And I went to the sessions that Laura Houston and all of you hosted, and my gosh, it described everything we needed to know. The questions were answered. Everyone had an opportunity to talk. Everyone had an opportunity to talk, and it definitely gave an eye-opening experience of what this next-level experience of the Sports and Entertainment District could be for San Antonio. Now, let me remind you, it's not just sports, it's entertainment as well. It is a place for us to enjoy, to walk, to live, and thrive. From what's going on at the rodeo with Cody to the airport expansion, people are seeing us along the world as the crown jewel that we are as our city. Now, let me tell you, popcorn isn't 25 cents anymore, right? We got to move on as a futuristic city for those that live and stay and work in San Antonio. And unfortunately, not like myself, a lot of students and graduates from our wonderful universities have left to Austin, to Houston, to Dallas. Why? Because we can't keep up as a city. And unfortunately, we are losing that talent. And I hope that you as a council, you as Mayor Jones, will make sure that we have a place to live, work, and continue our career path, not just from the start of graduation, but through the entirety of our lives. And with that, I definitely encourage you to make this a positive outcome for our community. Who is going to create this stadium for us? Who is going to create all of these opportunities for us? It is our artists, it's our contractors, it's our, you know, our people that are actually building with their hands from our community for this amazing opportunity. So as I ask you, keep this project moving, make this space for a real community. And, you know, we've looked at the numbers, now make this about San Antonio and make this about our home. Thank you.
Bill Brendel, followed by Robert Shelby.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the San Antonio Visitor Alliance, a local tourism advocacy organization that was established here in the mid-'90s, I'm here today to express our strong support for the proposed Sports and Entertainment District in downtown. According to our most recent economic study from 2023, the tourism industry welcomed 36 million visitors to our community. We contribute $21 billion in economic impact, supporting nearly 150,000 jobs, approximately one in eight citizens of San Antonio, and generating an annual payroll of $4.6 billion. These numbers underscore the vital role that tourism and hospitality play in San Antonio. We have had generations of local leaders who saw opportunities for San Antonio, and they invested time, energy, and finances into major tourism hubs. The redeveloped Alamo Complex, Hemisphere, the River Walk, the museum and mission reaches of the river, and the Pearl District, just to name a few. It's now time for leadership to set the stage for the next iteration of San Antonio's downtown, and we believe this sports-entertainment development is that investment. This visionary project represents a transformative opportunity for San Antonio, one that will stimulate economic growth, elevate our cultural and entertainment offerings, and further invest in a critical area of our downtown. Just as importantly, it promises to enrich the quality of life for residents and for visitors. San Antonio is known for its rich cultural heritage, a thriving tourism industry, and a passionate sports fan base. The creation of a modern and integrated district that brings together family-friendly areas, convention space, sports, live music, and entertainment will help position our city as a premier destination for innovation, events, and investment. Thank you.
Robert Shelby, followed by John Hinahosa.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Robert Shelby. I live in Councilman Currie's District One. In the interest of full disclosure, I am from Indiana and as such, a big basketball fan. I've been in Texas for over 53 years and consider myself as a naturalized Texan. Almost half of my time here, I've had season tickets to the Spurs games, so I do have some prejudice in favor of the Spurs. They have an excellent staff and are good citizens of San Antonio. At the meeting last month, I heard the mayor state that she thought the Spurs should give the city a portion of their ticket sales, concessions, and parking. In other words, if the Spurs won a new arena, they have to pay the city a kickback to get the approval. The city is not even going to spend any money to build a new arena. They will need to sell bonds to build the infrastructure that will be needed for the Hemisphere development, whether the arena is built or some other structure is built. These bonds will be paid off by the use of Project Marvel land. The mayor and city council should not be looking to the developers and businesses that will be doing business in the city to balance the city budget. Do your job and balance the budget, providing the basic services that the citizens deserve and expect from the city. This mayor and city council need to look at the big picture of the Sports and Entertainment District. It is not just the new arena for the Spurs. All the other development will also bring visitors and customers to the area. Hopefully, the additions to the Alamo Dome will give San Antonio another final four. Those visiting people will be paying sales tax. Out-of-town visitors may be using hotel rooms and rental cars that will generate county revenue to, for the venue tax, to fund the county portion of the arena cost. At the last meeting, opponents to the Sports and Entertainment District listed several things the money should be used for instead of that. In closing, look forward and move forward with a new arena.
John Hinahosa, followed by Derek Fox, please. Derek Fox, followed by Lauren Mandell.
Mayor Jones and Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Derek Fox, work in District Two and proudly served as Executive Director of the Valero Alamo Bowl since inception in 1992. Our 32 games have delivered $1.2 billion in economic impact, drawn nearly 2 million fans, and attracted 173 million national viewers showcasing San Antonio across the country. But beyond the big numbers, the Alamo Dome has helped us build something that belongs to our city, a holiday tradition that brings our citizens together to celebrate, connect, and host visitors who experience San Antonio at its very best. More importantly, the impact is deeply local. We have ticket holders in each of your districts. Every single high school and university in your districts receives scholarships to the bowl, 12 million so far since 2020, and 1.25 million alone last year. We're proud to be the number-one local scholarship giver of all bowl games. But we can't stand still. We've worked hard to move up from the bottom of the postseason rung in 1993 to our position as a top bowl outside the CFP. To do so, we have leapfrogged cities that have not invested in their facilities and compete with bowls in newer, more modern venues. To maintain our position that delivered $59 million in impact last year and attract future opportunities like the College Football National Championship to San Antonio, the Alamo Dome must evolve. The proposed Sports and Entertainment District ensures we don't just keep pace, but lead. This is about more than facilities. It's about building upon what makes our city so special, a vibrant, walkable, world-class downtown that reflects who we are and where we're headed. Let's keep our momentum going and ensure San Antonio keeps shining on the national stage. We support the city staff's recommendation on the Sports and Entertainment District and thank Mayor Jones, City Council, and Judge Sakai for their leadership on this transformational initiative. Thank you.
Lauren Mandell, followed by Stephanie Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor Jones and Council members, for the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the San Antonio chapter of Associated General Contractors and our 285-member companies. I'm here to express our support for the proposed Sports and Entertainment District, a transformative investment in our city's economic future, infrastructure, and quality of life. Our members, general contractors, specialty contractors, trade partners, service providers, and suppliers, are ready to roll up their sleeves and help build these projects from the ground up. From a commercial construction perspective, the benefits are clear. The development phase alone is expected to generate thousands of jobs, not just in construction, but across architecture, engineering, logistics, materials, design, and project management. These will be thousands of well-paying jobs that put food on the table and support families here in San Antonio. Opportunities like these give folks a pathway into successful and meaningful careers in the trades. And when you invest in local talent, the benefits multiply and stay here at home. This isn't just for tourists, it's for our residents and helps future-proof our city, preparing it for growth while honoring those things that make us uniquely San Antonio. The commercial construction industry stands ready to build not just the structures, but the foundation for San Antonio's continued growth, opportunity, and shared prosperity. Thank you.
Stephanie Reyes, followed by Mario Bass.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Stephanie Reyes, and I am proud president and CEO for the Real Estate Council of San Antonio, known as REXA. And I'm joined here by several of our REXA board members. On behalf of our more than 300-member companies and 1,400 industry professionals in the commercial real estate industry, I'm here today to express our strong support of the proposed Sports and Entertainment District. REXA's mission is to advocate for policies that support affordable, responsible, and sustainable development. And we believe that the vision of the district aligns with that mission, revitalizing our urban core through strategic catalytic investment that will drive long-term economic growth, create new jobs, and enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. The projected impact of this initiative is transformative. According to the city's own consultant, the development of the district would generate an estimated $18.7 billion in economic activity over the 30 years. Moreover, the city stands to benefit from $351 million in tax revenue during that time, without the use of general funds dollars or direct taxpayer burden. The San Antonio Spurs, in partnership with private investors, have already committed over $1 billion to anchor the effort. This kind of private-sector leadership, coupled with a long-term vision from the public sector, is exactly the kind of collaboration that this city needs to secure a vibrant and competitive future for downtown. Spurs generate, excuse me, it is important to recognize that how critical the Spurs are to this economy, for several economic, cultural, and community-based reasons. The Spurs generate hundreds of jobs directly through the organization and indirectly through events, tourism, vendors, and hospitality. Spurs games and events attract thousands of out-of-town visitors, filling hotels, restaurants, and shops. The visitor spending boosts local businesses' and sales tax revenue. Their presence in downtown will anchor and attract private investment. The Spurs are not just a team, they are symbolic of San Antonio's identity and our pride. We encourage City Council to move forward with this initiative, and we hope to see it back next two weeks.
Mario Bass, followed by Johnny Hernandez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and esteemed council. My name's Mario Bass, I'm the president and CEO with Visit San Antonio. I live in District 10, and I work in District 1. The Convention Center expansion, with its element of the proposed Convention Center expansion and the Entertainment District, will open up the doors for larger convention groups that can explore San Antonio finally and be immersed in our history and our culture, as well as the rest of our incredible city. In fact, meeting groups look to other cities that can accommodate their meeting space and technological needs. For example, from 2009, 2019 to 2024, San Antonio lost more than $716 million in economic impact from major conventions and 465,000 potential visitors, because the Henry B. Gonzalez Convention Center is just too small. An analysis showed us, if San Antonio was to expand our Convention Center by an additional contiguous 200,000 square feet of exhibit space, there are 94 groups representing $921 million, almost a billion dollars, in economic impact, representing 1.7 million potential visitors that we can prospect and try to bring to our city. This proposed expansion enables us to retain the convention business of high-level corporations and associations, such as the American Academy of Optomology. Optomology Convention represents 26,000 attendees and an economic impact of $20 million, and that's just within a short time period. And in closing, we'd also like to state that every year, we continue to see more and more demand for our destination, so thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Johnny Hernandez, followed by Lindsay Andrews.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones, City Council, City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm going to date myself, but I remember sitting at the Hemisphere Arena, watching the Spurs in the old arena that was already downtown. You know, we were celebrating 30 years as a local business, True Flavors. 20 of those years has been in the Convention Center. 10 of those years was as a tourism commissioner appointed by Hardburger and Castro, where I learned all about tourism and about the Convention Center. I want to talk for a minute about the Spurs' commitment to local businesses. La Gloria partnered with the Spurs in 2018. It was one of my career highlights to work with the Spurs, to see La Gloria and our brand in the Frost Bank Center. The Spurs have made a huge commitment to local businesses. They've spent millions of dollars and time creating an amazing culinary residency program that has 10 local businesses, restaurants, food trucks, or chefs. Every season, we rotate the residency program with an amazing team. Casey, Bobby, Kevin, Lori, RC. The Spurs' leadership is so dedicated to our local business community, you will not find, you will not find better owners committed to our local businesses and growing that in the new arena. I'm going to shift for a second to education. I serve on the Board of the Culinary Institute of America, and I serve as the Chair of the Hospitality Advisory Board for St. Phillips College. I say that to share with you, there is not a more important gift that you can give our hospitality workforce than creating an arena of the future in our downtown. The job creation strength of this type of attraction is unmeasurable, and it's simply not about the arena, it is about the collective strength of its surrounding area. The Hemisphere's beauty has everything to do with our community, the families from the West Side that come to visit our downtown. Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lindsay Andrews, followed by Jasper Colan.
Madam Mayor, Ben Alzavilla was with me also. I believe you called his name before?
Benito.
Benito.
Six minutes. Sorry, excuse me, four minutes.
Hi, everyone, I'm Benito of District 3, and Lindsay, I don't know what you're in.
10.
In 10. So, a big concern for a lot of us in the entertainment and bar industry is this will become another St. Mary Street and Broadway corridor situation, where the projects take longer than expected or incomplete, and the local small businesses lose out, and the non-elected city of San Antonio leaders aren't held accountable. All we're asking is to slow this vote down until more information and effective informed planning can be done. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and everybody, all the City Council, I work in the service industry. I've worked in it for 25 years. When they talk about entertainment, I am entertainment. I've been an entertainer for 25 years. I've talked to many bartenders, those who have, you know, that are bar managers, who are servers, those who are hurting now. They're already hurting in their service industry. Not asking to stop it, what I'm asking, because it's a great idea, I love the fact that we are going to do more for our city and more for our Spurs, that everybody's going to get what they can get later on, but what about now? What about the people that are suffering now? Those bartenders that are sitting there, that are normally used to working hard and getting $300 a day just to take home, are now making $60 just to take home now. All we're asking is to please slow it down so we can go ahead and see where those people are going to be able to land on their feet perfectly later. And I thank you all so much for taking this time out to listen to us, the people, the citizens of the City of San Antonio.
Jasper Colan, followed by Philip Adcock. Jasper Colan, followed by Philip Adcock. Philip Adcock, followed by Gabriel Castro.
Hello. I'm here to encourage you to not progress on this vote and no longer give any money to billionaires and land to billionaires. I heard one of the people earlier talk about a gap in entertainment with the smaller, medium-sized venues, saying that downtown San Antonio does not have a 4,500, 5,000-seat arena. But I believe that last year, City Council approved the Missions Stadium, which is going to fill that gap, because it's also an arena. So I'm not sure if they're counting that in their projection, because that's just competing with itself. I want to encourage the city to no longer let the leeches of San Antonio leech off the people, and let people have our homes, have our education, have everything we need. Don't let the Spurs hold you hostage like the Missions did. Don't let that happen. If the Spurs keep holding us hostage, that'll be the only time that I will ever say, "Go Spurs, go." Thank you.
Gabriel Castro, followed by Joshua Trevino.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. My name is Gabriel, and I'm 17 years old, a student here in San Antonio. I came here today because I believe in the future of our city, and I believe in the Sports and Entertainment District, that this is a big step in the right direction. This project isn't just about building something new. It's about creating a place that connects people, like families, students, neighbors, not just visitors. A place for concerts, games, festivals, and a real community. It's about making downtown more exciting, more accessible, and more connected. For young people like me, this project means opportunity, new businesses and venues. It gives us chances to get jobs, internships, and experiences in fields like entertainment, sports, tech, and hospitality. It gives us people like us a reason to stay in San Antonio and grow here. And I really respect that this project is listening. I've seen the effort to involve the community with meetings and outreach in all districts. This kind of transparency is what we should expect from big projects like this. I get there are concerns, but from what I've seen, this is being paid mostly by hotel and rental car taxes, paid by visitors, not by raising the local taxes. And the Spurs are stepping in a big way, too, that shows this is a team effort and not being forced on us. This is what we should expect from a big investment like this. This is being done with us and not with anyone. If we do this right with accountability, inclusion, and access for everyone, this district can become something we're proud of for generations. I support this project. I want to live in a city that's all about its future, a city that creates places for people to connect, celebrate, and grow. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Joshua Trevino, followed by Lupita Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and all Councilpeople. My name is Joshua Trevino. I am a current senior at Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi with plans to return back to my home city upon graduation in May of 2026. I currently live and reside in District 4, and I'm here to express my support for the new Sports and Entertainment District. I do truly believe that this project is a smart investment for the future of the city. This project is more than just a development. I do believe that it's an investment in San Antonio's future. Right now, many families I know, including mine, have to travel to different cities for different venues, such as Austin or Houston, to have to just go to concerts or different other larger events that San Antonio can't have. By building this district here at home, we create more opportunities for family to come together in the district and spend more quality time here in the city than having to leave the city and go somewhere else to spend that time. This isn't just about fun, either. It's about economic growth. A sports entertainment district will create jobs, generate long-term revenue for the city, and give local businesses more opportunities to thrive and grow. It means more people will be spending their money in San Antonio, whether it be the locals or any tourists that come. They'll be spending it at restaurants, shops, hotels, or anywhere else they desire to. This district will enhance and create a place where families can gather, celebrate, and build memories. It strengthens the value of family that San Antonio holds so dearly to their heart, by giving us more ways to connect, celebrate, and enjoy our city together. This district will help keep San Antonio competitive, vibrant, and attractive, not just for residents, but for visitors and for future investments as well. I want to conclude my time by saying thank you, Mayor Jones, and thank you for the Council people for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Lupita Gonzalez, followed by Yolanda Colunga.
Hi, Mayor. So Yolanda Colunga and Candido Colunga are sitting their time for me. And she'll be doing my slides. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I've provided you with hard copies of my presentation slides entitled, "Why a Health Equity Analysis is Essential for the Sports and Entertainment District Proposal Evaluation." So what is health equity? Health equity means that all San Antonians have a fair, just opportunity to achieve their best possible health, regardless of where they live, how much they earn, or their background. So why does this matter? Considering health equity in city planning helps ensure that growth benefits everyone. And what supports health equity? A full health equity analysis should ideally assess each of the vital conditions for health, such as humane housing, a thriving natural world that includes clean air, clean water, basic needs for health and safety, meaningful work, lifelong learning, reliable transportation. So I recommend an analysis in each of these categories to fully understand how the proposed sports district might impact community well-being. However, for this short presentation, I'll focus on two key areas with immediate relevance, which is the climate equity and housing equity. So, climate equity. Some districts are already facing high heat exposure, which can worsen with added infrastructure and reduced clean space. A climate equity analysis ensures we build in ways that reduce risk, especially in the most heat-vulnerable communities. With regard to the housing equity analysis, it begins with analyzing displacement risk, evaluating the lead to housing instability or displacement of long-term residents, establishing solutions that protect affordability and stability. So if you look at Slide, "San Antonio's Years with the Most 100-degree Days," you'll see that in 2023, we surpassed our projections. We're not in Milwaukee. Next slide is the heat vulnerability. So some parts of San Antonio can get hotter than others. Certain residents are more vulnerable than others. These inequalities are driven not only by socioeconomic conditions, but also the urban heat island effect, which is higher temperatures in areas with more physical infrastructure, such as concrete, asphalt, steel. The next slide, "Bear County Heat-Related Illnesses is on the Rise," includes dehydration, heat cramps, heat exhaustion, heat stroke, and heat-related deaths. The heat vulnerability by council district, this is an amazing map. I got this from SA Heat Maps. It's an interactive map produced in partnership with UTSA. Notice how this is reminiscent of a redlining map of San Antonio. So, the next slide on redlining, you'll see the alignment if you were to overlap these two maps, so redlining of San Antonio in 1934 and the heat vulnerability map of today. So this is important to know, because this impacts our life expectancy. According to our geographic location, there's a 20-year difference between ZIP Code 78207 compared to the ZIP Code in opposite contrast. So, potential starting questions for a climate equity analysis can include, what's the impact that the sports complex will have on existing urban heat islands? How could the complex influence the frequency of heat-related illnesses and emergencies? Next slide, the San Antonio Housing Policy Guidelines. So in 2019, the former mayor's Housing Task Force brought together over 350 San Antonio community members from across all sectors, all districts, all demographics, to identify top needs with respective housing policy recommendations. And it was published in San Antonio's Housing Policy Framework, the cornerstone of economic development. On Page 42, under the section entitled, "Protect and Promote Neighborhoods," there's a policy priority entitled, "Prevent and Mitigate Displacement." Its respective strategy reads, and I quote, "require public agencies to conduct a displacement impact assessment for any public project that receives $15 million or more in public investment and to budget for mitigation." So, key questions for housing as a vital condition for health can include, who experiences housing insecurity, and how might the proposed district affect them? And consider race, income, gender, age, disability. Will the proposed development create minimum wage or livable wage jobs? So, San Antonio already made health equity a priority with its climate equity framework, the SA Climate Ready document, and also Housing Policy Framework in the San Antonio's Housing Policy Framework. The Sports and Entertainment District is a major public investment. It should require evaluation of impacts on all vital conditions for health. So in closing, I say, San Antonio has already laid out a commitment to equity in its core policies, from the Climate Ready Plan to the Housing Policy Framework. These aren't just words on paper; they represent the voices of hundreds and thousands of San Antonians from every district, calling for action that centers health, fairness, and opportunity. But without proper equity analysis, we risk overlooking the very communities those policies were designed to protect. A project of this magnitude, likely to exceed $15 million in public investment, should not proceed without a housing displacement assessment as outlined in the Housing Policy Framework. Let's lead with data. What we choose to evaluate reflects what and who we value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Rogers, followed by Philip Cullen. Philip Cullen, followed by Tyler Caldwell. Sorry, are you Kate, ma'am? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Staff. I'm Dr. Kate Rogers, Executive Director of the Alamo Trust, the organization contracted by the State of Texas to run the daily operations of the Alamo and to oversee the implementation of the $550 million Alamo plan, which is well underway. Of course, all of us at the Trust have a vested interest in all things related to development of downtown San Antonio. Much like the Alamo plan itself, the revitalization of downtown has been a topic that has been debated and discussed for years. And like all things in the political realm, a window of opportunity sometimes opens at a moment in time when the stars align. The political will, the funding, and the vision all come together to create momentum that didn't exist before. For the Alamo, that time is certainly now. As you all know, the state appropriated $400 million during the last legislative session and another $150 million during the most current session that just concluded, and we have raised a total of $90 million privately to help bring the project to fruition. I often think about what downtown will look like 10 years from now, when our project is complete, along with Hemisphere, a new downtown ballpark, and potentially a new Spurs Arena and Sports and Entertainment District. It's clear that this is our moment, as long as we have the courage and conviction to seize it. I think we all envision a better and brighter San Antonio for our children and our grandchildren. That's certainly one of the reasons why the Alamo Project matters, preserving our rich and shared history for future generations. A vibrant, thriving downtown, where people want to live, work, and play, is another important legacy that we have the opportunity to leave. You all have seen the numbers in terms of economic impact for both our project, as well as the one under consideration today, and I think we can all agree, they're strong, to say the least. But beyond the billions in incremental tax dollars that will be generated, both will foster job growth, a better quality of life, and greater, more diverse opportunities for both local and visiting families to engage in world-class recreation and educational activities. Thank you all for your time. I want to say a special thank you to City Staff, Eric Walsh, Lori Houston, and City Attorney Andy Segovia for their continued support at the Alamo. Thank you.
Philip Cullen, followed by Tyler Caldwell.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for your time today. My name is Phil Cullen. I'm the Director of Basketball Operations for the San Antonio Spurs. My wife and I, we have five kids. We've called San Antonio home for the last 10 years. Her family has Latin roots, and we've enjoyed the celebration of culture and values unique here to San Antonio. This is home. When I first got here, I was part of the design team doing the development for our new training facility out at The Rock. We had a lot of input from a lot of different people, but I just want to highlight one that really stuck out. It was a conversation I had with Coach Pop. It was the most impactful conversation we had on the project. It wasn't about design, wasn't about logos, wasn't about paint colors or anything like that. All he said was this, "Take care of the people and protect the culture." It stuck with me ever since. It wasn't a slogan. It wasn't some type of playbook. Culture isn't something that you hang on the wall. It's how you show up. It's how you care for people. It's how you create a space where people feel like they belong. My family and I, we experienced this firsthand a few years ago, when my wife was pregnant with our twins. We went through a really difficult season. We almost lost them. There were some serious complications. Things didn't look good. But it was one of those moments where just everything else just kind of fades into the background. Basketball took a backseat. It was in that season that the people I work with didn't hesitate to come around us. They prayed for us, prayed with us, brought us meals, supported us in the moment. They showed up in the most real and human way, right when we needed it the most. That's culture. That's the heart. There's countless stories like ours, families in our organization, families across our community. We've been supported behind the scenes in ways that never make the news. There's so much more to our group. And that's why we believe so strongly in the responsibility that we carry. We're not just a sports team, but we're a part of this city. We're stewards of this moment with a platform and a responsibility to use it for something that matters, to better the lives of the people we represent, to protect what makes this place special, and to keep showing up for one another, the way San Antonio and the Spurs always have. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Tyler Caldwell, followed by Chris Davis. Tyler Caldwell, followed by Ashlyn Raspberry. Ashlyn Raspberry. Followed by Yolanda Rogers.
I had ran up here early, I'm sorry. But good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. My name is Ashlyn Raspberry. Thank you all so much for allowing me the time to speak with you all today. Just a little bit about me, I'm from a small suburban town in the Deep South, so I've never been to a place that has had so much rich culture and strong communities I have in San Antonio. And if this person gave me the opportunity to move here a year ago, I probably still wouldn't be able to experience this great city. And after I moved here, I quickly fell in love with the history, the culture, the people, but my favorite thing in the world, the food. But before I get into it, I kind of like to want to share just how I got here and my story and what I do with the Spurs. So I'm a part of the Talent Academy Program, and I'm the Corporate Development Associate. And it's a program that allows young professionals like myself to get hands-on experience of what it means to work for a world-class organization like the Spurs. And through this program, I've gained valuable insight into the sport industry, community engagement, and the enderworking for the NBA team. But more than that, I've learned about leadership, teamwork, and the responsibility that we all have on a professional and personal level to give back. But one of the biggest takeaways for me has been seeing how the Spurs use their platform to support and uplift the San Antonio community. And it's not just talking about making an impact, but making sure we also live it every single day. So from programs like Shoes That Fit, Community Court Unbailing, Spurs Use Basketball League, to stepping in to support for natural disaster relief efforts, the organization has shown me that even in a professional setting, that community does indeed matter. So when I reflect on my year living here in San Antonio and with the Spurs organization, I now see that the Spurs are more than just a team that I may work for or cheer for, but also is truly a part of the city of San Antonio's heartbeat. And being a part of SSNE has given me the confidence, stronger sense of self, and a deep appreciation for the people that make San Antonio so special. The connections that I've made and lessons I've learned have been truly life-changing, but I really appreciate you all giving me the time to share my journey with you today. And I'm proud to represent Talent Academy, SSNE, and not even prouder to be able to call San Antonio home. Thank you.
Yolanda Rogers, followed by Julie McCarty.
Good afternoon. There's actually going to be a couple of us, and we're all signed up. Patricia Mejia, Julie McCarty, Yolanda Rogers, and Rolie Lozano.
Okay. Eight minutes, there's four of them.
Thank you.
Okay, six minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Patricia Mejia, and I come before you in two roles, one as a citizen, but also as a leader of Spurs Sports and Entertainment, where I humbly serve as Chief Impact Officer. I have lived in this community for just shy of thirty years. I came to this incredible city as a first-generation college student. I purchased my first home in District Six, I now live in Seven, and I'm looking forward to calling District Five my future forever home. I spent my entire career helping to solve this city's most critical challenges, asking the most difficult questions. How can we simultaneously take a realistic view of systemic inequities while using the resources and institutions available to us to push forward to a future to create an opportunity for all? In this role, I've had the honor and been challenged to live into the legacy that this organization has done for fifty years. While some of those people you know very well by name, some of them you will never know. They simply show up to work, and they believe in one thing, that this is much bigger than basketball. Instead, basketball is a pathway for community impact. I have the opportunity now to introduce you to some of the people who you may never see, but every day show up. I often get accused of just being responsible for Spurs Give, when in fact, I think it speaks much larger to the organization, that my responsibility is to lead a whole team of twenty-five people who are simply committed to showing up for community. Here are just a couple of them so that you can learn about some of that commitment to community.
Hello, my name is Yolanda Rogers. I'm born and raised on the east side of San Antonio, D2. Just want to share one of my favorite memories, childhood memories, being in my great-grandmother's house, not even a house, it was an apartment on Lindsay Walk and Victoria Courts, walking to Hemisfer to see a Spurs game, and then turn around praying that they win, so I can get that free Big Mac at McDonald's, right, on Commerce. Those are just prime examples of what the Spurs do. I couldn't go there without the free community tickets that they still provide to this day. Or being at the East Side Boys and Girls Club where Coach Pop and players walk in. Those are just memories that stick with me and impact me even now. Now, proud of, proud child of God, product of SA ISD, employee of the San Antonio Spurs, work with a great community team that allows me to continue that work, continue to serve and provide those opportunities for all of our youth, all of our community. So, it's not going to stop, the work is not going to stop, and it's because of the arena or without an arena. This is what we do, this is who we are, and we're going to keep doing it. Thank you, guys.
Good afternoon, my name is Julie McCarty, and I'm born and raised in San Antonio, where my family roots run deep. I've had the honor of working on the community team for the Spurs for the last ten years, and currently serve as Director of Community Investments for our Impact Team. I've grown up with this organization both personally and professionally, and I'm proud to have been part of a team that has invested millions of dollars, resources, and donations back to the community that I grew up in. I've been able to witness firsthand the incredible impact it's made for schools, young people, nonprofits, and others that need support. Over the last thirty years, through just the foundation alone, Spurs Give has invested more than thirty-five million dollars into this great community. We've refurbished play spaces in each of your districts through our partnership with the San Antonio Parks Foundation and the Department of Parks and Recreation through PlaySA. We've supported hundreds of various nonprofits through the years through transformative grants across the city, like with Guardopia and the Mexican-American Civil Rights Institute, ensuring that young people have safe places to learn, play, and grow. I could go on sharing numbers and stats about our investments, and I encourage you to look at our impact reports to learn more, but in my experience, the impact goes beyond the numbers. I've had the privilege to witness firsthand the Spurs are committed to the community. It's at the core of who we are, we will remain committed to the community, and I look forward to the ways this opportunity allows us to continue that commitment.
Good evening, my name is Roly Lozano. I serve as the Inclusion Programs Manager at SSNE. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. At SSNE, we believe our role extends beyond the court. We're a connector, and we carry the responsibility to lead with integrity and intention. In my role, I help ensure our staff centers equity, celebrates diversity, and keeps community at the heart of everything we do. From cultural events, educational courses, and volunteerism, to deep partnerships with local leaders and nonprofits. One of the most meaningful examples of this work was during Pride Month, when we convened an impact-focused group with local LGBTQ+ leaders, not to celebrate, but to listen. That dialogue shaped how we approach partnerships, activations, staff training, and year-round commitments. It reaffirmed that real impact starts with a willingness to be guided by the community itself. We're committed to doing the same with every community that makes up our city. The Spurs aren't just from San Antonio, we belong to San Antonio. The city has shaped who we are, and in turn, we're proud to reflect its heart, its identity, and its spirit. That deep community connection has defined our culture, fueled our success, and built one of the most passionate fanbases in the league. As we continue to the future, we're committed to continuing this journey, walking in lockstep with our community to build something bigger together. So, thank you, and go Spurs, go.
Allison Nabatoff, followed by Rachel Melendez. Rachel Melendez, followed by Mary Sacedo.
Hi, Mayor. This is going to be the three of us.
Okay. Trinidad Diaz, is that right?
Yes, yes. That'll be my son.
Six minutes.
Great, thank you. Hi, good afternoon, Council and Mayor, we appreciate the time. My name is Rachel Melendez, I'm the Political Director for Unite Here Local 23, the Hospitality and Hotel Workers Union, and we're actually joined by members who work at the Grand High and the Hyatt Regency today. If you guys want to stand up. So, we're here today because we're concerned about this project. As I know you all know, the city has a very high poverty rate. The report that came out last year that was put out by the city, it's an almost eighteen percent poverty rate. And so, we know that working people are struggling to survive, right? We've not heard enough information about what kinds of jobs this project will bring or create, or other guarantees that we can expect to benefit working people. So, yeah, from our experience, we know hospitality jobs are not only physically and mentally challenging, they're also low-paying and with few, if any, benefits. So, we need more information before we can support this project, and I'm going to pass it to Mary.
Hi, okay, hi, my name is Mary. I live in District Four. I have worked at the Grand Hyatt for sixteen years, right, as a housekeeper, since it opened. Okay, we are proud of workers welcoming visitors, cooking, serving, and cleaning. We are the backbone of the hospitality industry. When people from around the world say everyone is so friendly in San Antonio, they're often talking about us. We need more info about how this is going to benefit workers like us. We want to be able to pay our rent, or buy our homes, send our kids to college, and even go on vacations ourselves. So, I want to thank you for listening to us and hope you take this to consideration for us. Thank you. And I'm going to pass it on to...
My name is Trinidad Diaz, I live in District Three, and I've been working with the Hyatt Regency for forty-three years, and I just don't think that this is a good deal right now. Our city should not subsidize to rich corporations without making sure that we have good jobs, good-paying jobs, and without workers, none of these companies could succeed without us. That's my part. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Diego Aldrete, followed by a group of Jessica Palacios, Leroy Cavassos, Reyna, and Eduardo Garcia, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, fellow citizens. My name is Diego Aldrete, I'm a Catholic, a District Nine resident, and a lifelong San Antonioan. St. Thomas Aquinas teaches us that to love is to will the good of the other for their sake. That's what Project Marvel is. It's a deliberate choice to will the good of our city and of future generations for their sake. Aquinas also teaches that governance is just only when it is ordered to the common good. Project Marvel is exactly that, it's a project ordered to the common good. This project would unite neighborhoods, strengthen our connectivity, support work, support culture, and it would do so without touching the general fund. Others have asked, why should the city help fund something when the Spurs ownership is so wealthy? It's a reasonable question, but the reality is that this is not a bailout, it's a partnership. The Spurs are choosing not to be self-interested in paying solely for their arena. They're being a great partner by putting money into the surrounding development and community incentives. We aren't taking away from basic services, but we are investing in our future. The catechism of the Catholic Church teaches that the common good is the sum total of conditions which allow people to reach their fulfillment more fully and more easily. Pope Francis told us that when we help the poor, our aim should not be charity alone, but to enable a dignified life through meaningful work. A thriving downtown positions San Antonio to attract and retain corporate headquarters and employers. Project Marvel helps create a rather convincing argument for San Antonio that would bring a meaningful amount of jobs here. This project would help keep our future workforce living and working in San Antonio rather than leaving for other cities. Supporting this project is not a favor to wealthy Spurs owners, it's a moral investment in the common good. It's a choice for jobs, for beauty, for community, for reconciliation, for promise, and for prosperity. So, I urge you, support this project and reach a deal in good faith, not as a favor to the Spurs, but as a moral act of love for the current and future residents of San Antonio. Thank you.
Jessica Palacios, Leroy Cavassos, Reyna, Eduardo Garcia, that group, that will have six minutes, followed by Luis Rodriguez.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jessica Palacios. I'm a resident in District Nine, and I work as the, I'm sorry, I serve as the Director of Government Affairs at the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Today, I'm joined by a member and an esteemed board member. Our members consistently tell us they want San Antonio to think differently, they want bold, forward-thinking ideas that position our power for growth while also improving the quality of life. One member recently shared with me their interest in Blue Zone principles, live better and longer. Policies that support healthier lifestyles, sustainability, and incorporating ideas into this urban development ensures we're not just expanding our economy, but also shaping the city that is healthier, more inclusive, and more resilient. This project gives us a chance that it's a rare opportunity to be agile, to create a district that not only drives commerce, but also reflects the values of our community. That means ensuring all small businesses, especially women, veteran, and minority-owned enterprises have a seat at the table. It also means designing spaces that foster connection, wellness, and sustainability for all. At the chamber, we stand ready to work with each of you and the community partners to make sure this vision becomes reality. Together, we can ensure this district is not just an economic engine, but a lasting legacy for future generations. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of this esteemed City Council. My name's Eduardo Garcia. I am here in two capacities, as a member of the Board for the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as well as a proud citizen of District Ten and a multi-generational citizen of our city. I'm here today for a couple of reasons. One is that as a project director for StanTech, which is a publicly traded architecture and engineering firm, I've seen firsthand the impact that construction can have on our citizens. Construction has a significant positive economic impact through job creation, increased economic activity, infrastructure development, and it boosts our local economies. It creates jobs, supporting local businesses, creating property values. Moreover, infrastructure projects like roads and services improve overall quality of life, and will attract further investment. The opportunity that we have in front of us as a community can have an impact, good or bad, for generations to come. Beyond the controversy, I believe that we can agree on several things. In the short term, a project like this brings economic opportunity to a lot of people. The work in the local design and construction industries will positively impact many families, local manufacturers, suppliers, distributors, retailers, subcontractors, contractors, labors, all of them will feel the positive impact of a project of this magnitude. This work and the payments received will keep our citizens employed in reinvesting their pay in San Antonio. Money spent on a construction project circulates through the economy as workers spend their wages boosting local businesses and creating further economic activity. A study by the World Economic Forum found that for every dollar spent on construction, there's a return of about a dollar thirty to a dollar eighty for that same dollar. So, in the long term, a project of this magnitude can create a larger impact on the perceived collective value of our own town. Think about that. Every day, businesses around the country are looking at our city and saying, why should we move to San Antonio? And the truth is, they want a quality workforce, and a quality workforce wants a quality of life. So, we have an opportunity. So, now, while Project Marvel may not solve all of our problems, and this open forum for discussion is an essential part of our due process, I believe that this investment will help attract more and larger opportunities in the future. We don't have to give up our voice or pride of San Antonio to embrace change, instead, we need to manage change so that our future generations feel the positive impact of a larger tax base, a commitment to education and affordable housing, and protecting the magic that is our city. This is Puro San Antonio, and our opportunities for a better future are in front of us now. Thank you for your time and leadership in giving our citizens a voice. Please use your position carefully to lead our generation to come. Thank you.
Mayor Jones and members of City Council, I'll be brief as the clock is ticking. I'm Cili Roy Cavassos Reyna, the founder and CEO of Localism Inc. Our headquarters is in District One, I'm a proud resident of District Eight. And I'm going to tell you a quick story. When I was in Washington DC at the US Hispanic Chamber, during the global pandemic, I visited over seventy-five cities in this country, and everybody would always ask, how does San Antonio do it? And I would tell people, we invest in strategic community and economic development that ensures the economic vitality so that we can retain talent and so that corporations can continue to look south to San Antonio to find their home. And that is what today is about. We stand at a moment in time. We stood at a moment in time in nineteen sixty-eight when we brought the World's Fair here, and this is another moment in time where we are about to be on the brink of an economic precipice that will transform how San Antonio is looked at globally for the next five to ten decades. So, here we are today, supporting this project and ensuring that we continue to put San Antonio on the international stage, not just for our rich culture, but for our rich desire to be an economic competitor with everybody else in Texas, because we are the best, we are the most unique, and we are so deserving of all of this downtown revitalization for future generations to come, and those who wish to make San Antonio home like so many of us have. Thank you.
Luis Rodriguez, followed by Carolina Calderon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and council members. It's never fun going after the great Leroy Cavassos. But my name's Luis Rodriguez, I know many of y'all here already. I'm the president of the first Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to have ever been established in America in nineteen twenty-nine here in San Antonio. I'm also a proud lifelong resident, oh, we're corporately headquartered in District Four, by the way, proudly, and a lifelong resident of San Antonio, proudly, living in District Ten, raising two incredible daughters. When I advocate for projects like the Sports and Entertainment District, I think about my why. I think we all need to think about our why. For me, it's not just numbers on a page, it's about my two daughters. Growing up in a city that's full of opportunity, where they see a vibrant community, thriving businesses, and a strong local economy. It's also about the nearly one thousand San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce members we serve, many of them small, family-owned, and deeply rooted in our community businesses. They've created jobs, lifted up the neighborhoods that they live in, and given so much back to this city. I've seen firsthand how one opportunity can transform not just the business, but the lives of dozens, the lives of dozens that are part of that business as well. The recent economic impact analysis confirms what many of us believe, that this project will be transformational. It projects billions in new economic activity, thousands of jobs, and increased opportunities for local businesses. But beyond the numbers, this is about momentum for our city and for our hope, and our hope for the next generation. That's why the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce strongly supports this project. We believe it has the power to create a ripple effect when that supports our small businesses, strengthens our workforce, and ensures the minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses are part of the success story from the very beginning. On behalf of our Board of Directors, we stand ready to work with the City Manager and City Council to ensure this is prosperous for all of San Antonio. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, thank y'all for your leadership.
Carolina Calderon, followed by the group Graciela Sanchez, the Honorable Maria Barizabal, and Antonia Castaneda.
Hello. Hi, my name is Carolina Calderon, and I'm a proud resident of downtown San Antonio, living in District 2. I'm here today to express my enthusiastic support for the development of the Sports and Entertainment District. As someone who lives in the heart of downtown, and I see firsthand the potential this project has to energize our community, not just economically, but socially and culturally. This is the kind of growth that is exactly what San Antonio needs to continue thriving as a vibrant, forward-moving city. I'm excited for what this means for our future. From job creations, to increased tourism, to more reasons for residents like me to stay invested in long-term in a place we call home. It makes me proud to be part of San Antonio and even more motivated to contribute to its continuing success. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Graciela Sanchez, Maria Barizabal, Antonia Castaneda, please, followed by Arturo Madrid. This group will have six minutes.
Thank you. I was going to talk about the City Council of San Antonio, beginning with a story that we didn't become a democratic city until 1977, when a group of young people worked very hard to create single-member districts. And that, I saw you all on television, the first meeting you had, and I was so proud of what I saw, because I saw the diversity of our city. And just for you to know that you are what a lot of us have hoped for and worked for for many years. The second thing I was going to share was the story of Hemisphere, because it seems to be the first thing we're told when we're talking about this Sports and Entertainment District. Well, Hemisphere was not the Panacea that people tell us. It did not bring long-term economic benefits to this city. We took many years to figure out what to do with that site. And we have to remember that 1968 was also the year that here in San Antonio, a group of young people walked out from Etwood School District's high schools because they just wanted a better education. 1968 is also the time that San Antonio made national news with a story of hunger in this country. Hunger in America. So I wrote a bunch of stuff, but since I can't read all of it, I am going to just say the following. I have sat here, as long as some of you have, and Councilwoman Spears and Mayor, you've sat here the whole time. I appreciate your being here for this long. And I was thinking of all the hearings that I have been part of, not just as a citizen, but for 10 years, sitting in one of your seats as a councilwoman. I have heard, it's almost the same story, there's two sides. We have two cities, and there's the side that comes, and they talk about one thing and then the other side. And it's the same thing over and over. I have heard so many promises, and I have been disappointed so many times. With the Alamo Dome, we were promised a cash cow. And that cash cow never moved. It didn't, there was no long-term benefit. We were told that we were not going to spend any money on the Alamo Dome. And you all know the story, how much money. So I'm just going to go to the chase of what I wrote. And I'm talking about 57 years after Hemisphere, and how this city has changed for the better for many people. But we are still experiencing a very high poverty rate, 18% compared to 11.5 in the country. Some of our lowest-income zip codes are very close to downtown. They will be impacted by anything that is done downtown. These are very difficult times in our country and in the world. San Antonio is part of everything that is occurring. We're part of the world. There are economical issues, there are political issues, and there are social issues. There is instability. This is not the time to be making decisions like this major one that is being made on how to use the taxpayers' money. You have a budget shortfall that you will have to figure out how to handle. You have, we have major infrastructure funds that are needed and construction of new drainage systems, because we do not want to see again what we saw recently with 13 people dying just because they were driving on a street. They weren't going through flooded streets. Climate change will continue to create havoc, not only with flooding, but severe heat, cold, and fires. And I think we even experienced a fire yesterday. There will be cuts in federal funds that we have become used to, taking care of people like the elderly, children, funds for housing and for health. Cuts in Medicaid and WIC and SNAP will affect us too, because they impact large numbers of our people. ICE. ICE raids and its corresponding chilling effect are taking workers right now from construction sites, from restaurants, from the hospitality industry, even from their homes. How will we deal with the effects of losing this much labor? Who's working on that? Stress, scarcity, and plain hate make our police and fire departments more needed than ever. How are we going to pay for these? Some reflections for you that I hope that you think about. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Arturo Madrid, followed by Alejandro Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilpeople. Thank you for having me. An academic, I have only questions. That's how we learn, questions. So the first question is, whose project is this? I don't see any former councilmembers or mayors saying, "This is my project." So you ask yourself, whose project is this? And I will tell you that I've attended one of the sessions, one of the workshops, and I filled out the surveys. And the rationale that was provided was that we needed this project because we want more people coming to San Antonio as tourists. And the question I asked is, do they come to San Antonio as tourists for the Spurs, for the entertainment? Or do they come to the Alamo? Or do they come to the Riverwalk? Or do they come to the graduation rites at the Air Force Base? Why do they come? And the second question is, who benefits from this? Are the workers going to benefit? Or are there going to be the low-wage workers that we always have had? Certainly, when the University of Texas San Antonio came, and the hospital came, we had better-paid jobs, but I don't see this happening here. And what about the small businesses? We're told that the small businesses are going to do very well. In cases like this around the country, who gets the businesses? The small businesses are the chains. They're the ones that profit. Were the public benefit from it? By and large, as I go around the city, I find that people in the city tend not to come downtown, except for major kinds of events. They avoid it. And ultimately, who is going to pay for this? Who is going to pay for it? In terms, not only who's going to put up the money, but who is going to end up paying for it? The displacement of people, for example, the marginalization of people, the difficulty it'd be to move around downtown area, that's who's going to pay for it. So ask yourself these questions. Thank you.
Alejandro Lopez, followed by Antonio Cabral.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council. My name is Alejandro Lopez. I'm the proud president of the San Antonio Alliance of Teachers and Support Personnel, the union that represents workers in San Antonio ISD, the heart of our beautiful city. I was also born and raised in San Antonio and live in District 3, less than 10 minutes away from the proposed stadium site. As teachers in SA ISD return to work this week, I'm struck by a stark juxtaposition. Hundreds of millions of public dollars for a new stadium, while underpaid teachers spend their own money preparing classrooms for the working-class students of our urban core. You are all discussing massive public investment in sports entertainment downtown, while the district serving working-class families downtown faces state-enforced austerity on an unprecedented scale. A lot of conversation about the benefits of public investment in the heart of our city, with little discussion of the benefits of investing in the public schools that form our city's beating heart. If it moves forward, the Project Marvel development will be built entirely within the boundaries of San Antonio ISD. And such a huge investment in entertainment should come with a commensurate investment in public education. It's crucial that our union, our coalition partners, and our district leadership are central to this process. I want to echo much of the sentiment that you're hearing from so many members of our community today. Not CEOs or executive directors, but regular working people. Their skepticism is justified, and their critiques of a plan to spend public funds on a new stadium for a corporation, even one as beloved as the Spurs, are absolutely reasonable. I want to celebrate Mayor Jones' position on this project, on proposed community benefits, including a huge and hugely necessary investment in early childhood education, and uplift councilmembers Castillo, Maki Rodriguez, and Galván's principles pushback. And on behalf of workers and working families across the city, I want to ask for so much more. Project Marvel, the plan that many of our community members believe to be an already-done deal, it should have things that make our community stronger, because that would be a legacy worth investing in. Thank you.
Antonio Cabral, followed by Jesus Garcia. Jesus Garcia, followed by Robbie Brown.
Hi, actually, we're a group, and Antonio is sitting his time to me. Antonio Cabral. Mary Cabral.
Ma'am, it looks like it's just Jesus Garcia. Would they like to see their time to you for two minutes?
Both my husband and I signed up. We registered.
I have Antonio Cabral, is that maybe? I've got Antonio Cabral and Jesus Garcia. Okay, and your name, sir? Sorry, what is your name, sir?
Antonio Cabral.
Okay, so that's one. And then Jesus Garcia? Okay, so you're giving your time to, okay, so you've got two minutes, ma'am, thank you. What were the other names that are in this group?
It's Mary Cabral, same as his, C-A-B-R-A-L. They just checked on it and said, and said I was there. I got an email saying that I was registered.
Okay, we've got four minutes, ma'am, thank you.
Good afternoon. Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Cabral, and I am proud to be a resident of District 7. I am a retired teacher, and also retired from the Bureau of Hearings and Appeals of the Social Security Administration. As a teacher, I taught at all levels, from grammar to high school. And also, after earning my master's degree, I taught at Palo Alto College. I participate in the GED Fabulous Luncheon Organization, which provides funds to Alamo College for GED tuition and scholarships for college to GED graduates. And in 17 years that we have been in existence, we have managed to bring in about or over $1 million to the Alamo College, which is a very, I believe, worthy cause. I'm also a proud member, I'm a buena gente from Esperanza Peace and Justice Center and other worthy community organizations. FYI, I like the Spurs, I watch them all the time. I love this city, but do we want to build a new arena as part of Project Marvel? Question. I'm telling you all of this because I want you to know that I have dealt directly with families who have a hard time economically to send their children to school, and also how disabled men and women who are denied assistance by the Social Security suffer severely unjust, and in many cases even racial, obstacles. I'm here today to ask questions about Project Marvel, and when I speak, I am speaking for thousands of people that feel the same way, but are too timid or too busy holding two low-wage-paying jobs. I am here in order to represent a lot of people that cannot be here. It's not just me, okay, that's all. And I know that every speaker feels the same way. I called the City Council representative, my City Council representative, and talked to her assistant. I will repeat what I have said to him. What we, the people, are requesting is that council be more transparent and give the residents more information, such as estimate as to how many jobs will be provided, and what kind of jobs. Usually, the jobs among these ventures that come from these ventures pay very low wages that perpetrate our low poverty level. How many of them will this venture bring? How many above-poverty-level salaries will it offer that will improve our city or help our city to get out of the inhumane cycle of poverty that San Antonio holds at present time? Reminder, 17.7 residents in San Antonio live in poverty, and this is compared to 13.9 in Texas and 11.5 nationwide. And all of this is caused by low-paying jobs and educational levels. San Antonio is one of the most economically segregated cities in the US, with high poverty...
Ma'am, you can submit your written comments to the clerk for the record.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for listening, and that's all.
Thank you. Jesus Garcia, followed by Robbie Brown. Jesus Garcia. Robbie Brown, followed by Dett Cole.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to y'all today. Appreciate the amazing work that y'all do in this community, and especially on this topic. It obviously has taken a lot of time and energy from the city and from you, and so I'm forever grateful for that. My name's Robbie Brown. I'm the president of South Texas for DocuMation. And so I'm here to speak in favor of Project Marvel. DocuMation is proud local San Antonio business. This year, we actually marked 30... This year, we actually mark 36 years being family owned and third generation in this community. We're about 150 employees strong here in San Antonio, with a combined employee count of 215 across Texas. We've grown over the last few years with being one of the largest technology service providers in Texas, and our love and commitment for the community that we call home here in San Antonio. So our Texas-based headquarters, obviously here for the last 11 years, has resided in District Six, which we're proud and excited to get to work with newly mentored Councilwoman Gonzalez. And that being said, I wanted to come before each of you today to share how much our partnership with the Spurs has meant being a family local business for over the last four years. And as I mentioned, that we've had a lot of tremendous growth. That growth over the last three or four years has been 30% year-over-year growth. And our business supporting mainly small businesses in this community as well, 80% of those. So that being said, the Spurs organization awarded us a contract four years ago. And I don't believe it is coincidence, in a lot of ways, that we've seen such a significant growth in our business, which we feel like, as somebody shared earlier, a ripple effect into the community. We have since gone on, after that as well, to land more partnership in businesses with many other of the major sports teams in Texas, so Dallas Mavericks, Houston Rockets, Dallas Stars, and so on and so forth. And so you may ask, why is this so relative at all in the discussion around Project Marvel?
Thank you, Robbie. You can submit your comments for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Dett Cole, followed by Steve Verstig.
Good afternoon, Dett Cole, and I'm giving my two minutes to Steve Verstig.
Four minutes, thank you.
Hi. I live in District Two, in the original 36 square miles of San Antonio. And I also now live in the P F Z. My day job is at a manufacturer in District Two. I'm a product engineer. I'm a board member of Government Hill Tomorrow Community Organization and a steering committee member on Tier One Neighborhood Coalition. I've also joined the No Project Marvel Coalition. My wife and I are small business owners in District Ten. I see that, you know, this economic impact analysis seems to add up to like 18 billion over 30 years. And that's about 600 million a year. So, you know, our business on Austin Highway, we, we employ someone full-time and part-time, and we sell local artisan products. And we have people who always go to the store when they visit town. And I'm sure I could get a consultant to say that our economic impact is $60,000, which is 1/10,000 of this project. And so if we're talking about $50 million, 1/10,000 is $50,000. And we would take that for improvements, infrastructure of dressing rooms and public restroom. But I don't, I don't expect that, and because that isn't the way it works. I mean, private businesses fund their own projects and their own businesses. And the government should fund the citizens' needs. We heard in the economic impact analysis, we heard about NPV. But what we didn't hear about was the economic net present value. Economic NPV is a project evaluation tool that assesses the overall impact of a project on the welfare of society as a whole. It is similar to standard financial NPV. But unlike the latter, which considers only financial profitability from the project owner's perspective, the ENPV looks at the social costs and benefits and includes externalities. So, you know, expected economic impact can fall very, very short. Just go over to East Houston Street to see proof of that. The consultant talked about a haircut on some of his numbers. Well, the east side didn't take a haircut. We got decapitated. You know, the city gave up on the Frost Center, I guess, and the county stuck, still paying hundreds of millions of dollars for that. The Spurs are anxious to spend hundreds of millions extra downtown. Why haven't they spent hundreds of millions on the east side? Why is that? So, you know, no Project Marvel doesn't mean we don't want a new arena. It doesn't mean we don't want new visitors incentives. Doesn't mean we don't want infrastructure downtown. But we just don't want it this way, with huge chunks of public money when other community needs exist in other areas of town. I mean, the urgency just seems manufactured. If this project's right, it'll be right tomorrow. It'll be right next year. It'll be right three years from now. Where's the urgency? So, you know, saying no, we're not NIMBYs. We're actually MBs. We want public money in our backyard first where we need it. Thank you.
Sam Pachevich, followed by Elizabeth Franklin. Elizabeth Franklin, followed by Edward Romero.
Thank you. Thank you. Liz Franklin, living District Two, longtime community advocate for District Two. Welcome, all of you. I haven't been around in a minute, so I hardly know anybody except Mark. I'm gonna go in a different direction, because it's almost 5 o'clock, and then that's citizens to be heard and dinner, and you know where we're gonna be after that, and I only got 10 minutes. So, what do people really mean when they talk about inclusion? What do they mean when they talk about transparency? Well, we already had a class on that today, thanks to Madam Mayor. You can't have stuff that gets lost in traffic while we're out here complaining, we, the citizens, the community, that it's not transparent. That's a big deal. The money is a big deal. But what does inclusion mean? What does transparency mean? What does culture mean? It means, don't leave me behind again. We left people behind when we did the Frost Bank. I wasn't here. You weren't here. You weren't here. You may not have even been born yet. But the reality of it is, we promised them jobs. We promised them infrastructure. We promised them people coming from 151 to eat in their restaurants, and none of that happened. And the thing that bugs me more than that is, people were turned away from the Elton John and the Bad Bunny concert because it wasn't adequate parking. That's a simple fix. That's a simple fix. What is that in the, in the whole project? What does that look like? Maybe that's a job for me. Maybe that's a transition for me. But we don't discuss it because, we got 500 spots. We'll work it out later. We've been working stuff out for 30 years, folks. This is a new, this is a new leadership. You guys got your own precedents set. You could do something novel. You could take care of the people and develop our economic structure. I think you're all more than capable. Thank you.
Edward Romero, followed by Victoria Alejandra.
Good afternoon, Mayor Jones, council members. My name is Eddie Romero. I'm the chief strategy officer at Centro San Antonio and research fellow with Better Futures Institute. In 2024, Hemisfer welcomed over 2 million visitors. That came out to over 200,000 visits from District Three community members, and over 200,000 visits from District Five community members, and well over 100,000 community members from other districts. I highlight this to highlight the tool, the reach of Hemisfer, but also the tools that exist. And if equitable use is the measure of success, Hemisfer is a model to scale. It's intentionally designed, welcoming to all, and offers both mixed-use and mixed-income amenities. 311, the 311 app, that's another tool, where the public can transparently track city services and then for, and therefore, public investment. We are more equipped than ever with talent and technology to track outcomes, analyze data, and take action to serve the people of our community. UTSA's School of Data Science, a Carnegie One, a Carnegie R1 Research University, and one of the only few public Hispanic-serving institutions with the highest research activity designation in the U.S. UTSA has made a major commitment to San Antonio in expanding its campus network in downtown and throughout our city, only blocks away. In Centro, we're a proud affiliate member of the city's Smart SA partnership. We have a shared mission to drive efficiencies, leverage opportunities, and coordinate strategies to build a more connected, inclusive, and resilient San Antonio. It is possible, and this district can succeed if we continue the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Alejandra, followed by Michelle Madsen.
Hey, friends. Good afternoon, council members. Like closer, like that? Okay, that sounds good. Okay, good afternoon, y'all. You can call me Alex. I live in District One. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I feel like I'm gonna throw up, but I promise I won't. I feel very strongly about this situation, and that's why I'm here. I wasn't paid to be here. I'm just here on my own time. I'm starting to think that, as former council member Graciela Sanchez mentioned, that perhaps there are indeed two cities, one for the rich in their business suits, and one for the working-class people who are struggling. We're a very poor city, and we think that this arena is gonna provide money and magically trickle down to the most vulnerable is a bit foolish. So let's not ignore what ICE is doing to our communities, what poverty is doing to our children and our elders. ICE is taking people, illegally detaining them at the courthouse as we speak, probably. We're too distracted. This is not the time for a new arena that most people didn't even ask for. Transparency, right? What does that mean? Well, a study was done by Friends of the Spurs, because unfortunately, it sounds like a giant sales pitch to me. So I think it's kind of an insult to our intelligence to say that these have been thought through. I don't think it's been taught through. I, if you want to hear my opinion, it's been egregiously rushed. And to say that people have had a good chance to review the details is a falsity. Weren't we just discussing at the beginning of this morning that we don't, even you may or didn't know what the, what the analysis was? I mean, we did all those meetings for months, right? There was that initial presentation we had this morning. But nobody had that analysis. So I think it's rushed. And also, the truth is that these, this funding, it can be used for other uses. So I'm not against dreaming of a better San Antonio, just like y'all sitting before me. I'm sure that's why you're here. But not at the cost of transparency of our people. My neighborhood is not for sale, y'all. We need investments in safer streets. I mean, flood prevention, what just happened on Austin Highway? We need to tackle that, not be talking about luxury arenas. I mean, come on now. Tax dollars should not be used to fund private development. We need climate studies done as well. Last thing I'll say is that I hope that you postpone until we have a serious independent cost-benefit analysis.
Thank you.
Not a study done by Friends of the Spurs. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Madsen, followed by Malik Alexander.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Michelle Madsen, and I'm the president and CEO of the San Antonio Hotel and Lodging Association, which proudly serves nearly 300 members that represent the face of hospitality to millions of visitors every year. We stand in strong support for the proposed Sports and Entertainment District and encourage you to invest in the quality of life and professional development of future generations by moving forward with the project. Impact studies show that every dollar of visitor spending generates an additional dollar of income for our San Antonio employees. With this in mind, we applaud the city's proposed funding structure, as the district will be largely financed by visitors with dollars that are very restricted. The hotel occupancy tax funds identified by the project by law are not available to address many other valid issues impacting our city. However, by smartly using these very restricted funds for the district, we are allowing visitor spending to generate maximum return on investment for our workforce and for our residents. This ensures that those who visit our city are bearing the cost, while residents see the benefit through improved infrastructure, jobs, and revitalization. Community benefits are also already built into the project through our own hotel revenues, even before the Spurs proposed commitments. As 15% of hotel occupancy tax goes directly to arts and culture, and 15% goes directly to historic preservation. Increased visitor traffic will result in millions of additional funds for San Antonio artisans, students, programs, and local businesses. The expansion of the convention facilities and an updated and enhanced Alamo Dome are absolutely critical to our ability to compete with other Texas cities for high-profile gatherings that generate millions in economic impact, contribute to the professional growth of our hospitality workforce, and expand access for our residents to premier events that are previously beyond our reach. This project will change our city for the better and is an opportunity to stake our claim as an epicenter of thoughtful development that prioritizes culture and history hand-in-hand with growth and prosperity for our citizens. Thank you for the opportunity for that this process has given us. On behalf of our members, I encourage you to support this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Malik Alexander, followed by Annalisa Pease. Annalisa Pease, followed by Trish DeBarry.
Hi, I'm Sandra Martinez. I'm giving my time.
Thank you so much. My name is Annalisa Pease, and I'm here...
One sec, ma'am.
Sandra Martinez.
That's what I'm signed up for as well.
Ma'am, you're signed up for both. You have two minutes to speak right now.
Can I take her time if I speak at 5:00? Okay. Thank you.
Trish DeBarry, followed by John Neal.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to be here on behalf of the Centro Board of Directors and our amazing ambassador operation who are here today. Who did a great job. And by the way, they're great humans, and they keep downtown clean and safe every single day. Listen, you all had a watershed moment. I truly believe that. And this is a difficult decision, no doubt. But there have been other councils that have faced very difficult decisions, much like this one, with lots of controversy, much debate, whether it was a fluoride campaign that brought fluoridation to San Antonio's water system, or the TPC San Antonio, which, by the way, went through four to six city councils before we got to where we are today. And the Texas Open is now at the TPC San Antonio and is a juggernaut for economic development. So I guess my point is, you are in good company, my friends, and difficult decisions require bold leadership and backbone. So I believe that we are at this critical juncture once again, and another watershed moment, right? One that will bring a Sports and Entertainment District into downtown and invest billions of dollars here. And by the way, I want to underscore this point. Those billions of dollars that come into downtown are not just staying in District One and in downtown. Those hot tax dollars, sales tax dollars, property tax dollars are going into city coffers. And guess what? That wealth is spread across streets, sidewalks, parks, in all 10 districts. So make no mistake, this is our opportunity, and I hate to borrow upon a movie that I really love and my kids enjoy, and that is Wicked. And by the way, wicked no longer means evil. Wicked means, according to my kids, hella cool, yeah? An opportunity for greatness. But we have the opportunity, like the song says in Wicked, to defy gravity. This is our opportunity to soar. There may be others that try to pull us down, but we're gonna create not just an opportunity to bring the Spurs back to downtown, jobs, and yes, even affordable housing. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
John Neal, followed by Elaine Cummins.
Hello. I think Project Marvel, in my opinion, is a net loser as it stands today. Also, I know that by the time it gets here, it's over. It's gonna happen. I know that. We all know that, really, don't we? Well, you know what? There might be a chance, but it's a slim one. And my point is this. You can make this loser into a winner, I think, in two ways. I saw that 30% of... I saw that 30% of the, the construction, uh, is gonna go 30% to the city. You know, city contractors and so forth. It should be 100%. You know, you should start at 100 and work your way down, not start at 30 and try to work your way up. It won't happen. Also, they talk about public-private partnerships. They talk about watershed moments. They talk about, um, you can't say no. Um, it is a watershed moment. Um, and I think if you really want to make history, and if you really want to make news, and if you really want to make a difference in the future, so this small-market town won't be facing the same thing 20 years from now, you need to buy into the Spurs. You need to be part-owner of the Spurs with a 20-year plan to own the Spurs outright. Because every small-market city faces this every 20 years, except one. And that's Green Bay, Wisconsin. And do you know why? Because the Packers are owned by the community. That's the only way you're gonna ever avoid this. And, uh, that's, that, that would turn this loser into a winner, if you could do it. And I'm gonna tell you what, the most powerful word you ladies have is "no," as you know. And you need to use it to get your way. The city has all the leverage here. Don't think the Spurs do. That's not, there's nobody clamoring for the Spurs outside of San Antonio. They love San, San Antonio loves the Spurs. Everybody else barely knows the Spurs are there. So they don't have the leverage they think they do. You have the leverage. You have the reasons. You have the, even the poorest person loves the Spurs here in town. You'll be doing something for the guy that'll never set foot in that stadium, because he doesn't have the money to do it. But he wants the Spurs to stay here. Everybody in town wants the Spurs to stay here. But they're only gonna stay here if the city of San Antonio has the say to make sure they don't go anywhere else. They, you need to have a, you need to have a ownership stake with a veto power, and you need to make that part of this deal. Thank you.
Elaine Cummins, followed by Ruby Jimenez.
Good afternoon. I'm Elaine Hill, in District One. I'm gonna tell you, give you some information about my credentials in the hope that what I say will, uh, have an impact. I have a PhD in Public Administration and Public Policy from the American University. And I retired from the FBI as a member of this executive service in 2017. I'm currently a consultant with Midr Corporation, but I'm here today as a citizen of San Antonio. I had many, I have many unanswered questions about this project. But Mayor Jones, I was, uh, very pleased to hear you push for an assessment. I think I heard you say that we weren't even gonna move forward until we had an assessment. So I was very eagerly awaiting, uh, what we were promised, uh, or at least I thought was promised to be an assessment. But, uh, again, Mayor, by the questions that you've asked today to the people who were presenting on the agenda, I think you're not quite satisfied that we're at the level of a full assessment either. The, uh, the document that was provided to us online, uh, falls far short of what an assessment would be. It refers to itself as an analysis or a study, but it lacks con, uh, context and rigor of a true assessment. What we need are clear goals. We need a risk assessment. We need a cost-benefit analysis, and an explanation of where these estimates and approximations come from. Thank you.
Ruby Jimenez, followed by Hope Andrade. Hope Andrade.
I'm so sorry, Mayor. I did not hear. Um, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. My name is Hope Andrade, and I come to you, um, not part of any organization. I come to you as a proud resident of San Antonio for the past 75 years. I guess I just told you how old I am. Um, and I am so grateful for this city, for the city that has given me unlimited opportunities and has given me an amazing life. And my work in this community is to make sure that everyone has the same opportunities that I had. Today, I live in District One, but I grew up in District Five. And I was a little girl that her parents did not speak English, but yet San Antonio offered me opportunities to grow. So, you know, I was just a teenager when Hemisphere 68 opened its doors. I still remember the excitement, the pride, the way that it put our city on the map, the moment that it changed how we saw San Antonio, but more importantly, how the world saw us. In fact, it was my husband's and mine's first date, so it always will be memorable. And I think back of those leaders, of what it must have taken them to put such a huge investment in our downtown. I'm sure it wasn't easy. I'm sure that they got criticized, and, and they had to sacrifice, and they had to be committed to this. But they did it, and that's what put San Antonio on the map. So in our downtown, any city, every city needs a vibrant downtown to be successful. And this is what the San Antonio Sports and Entertainment District would do. It would bring a vibrant downtown that would bring more opportunities for jobs, that it would bring more tourism for our hospitality and tourism business, and it would also bring a good quality of life, where people could enjoy with their families, uh, green spaces and venues. Am I done? So anyway, so I support this. Thank you so much. Um, one day, uh, people will look at you and say, "How did they get it done?" And so, thank you for what you do. Uh, I never ran for office, so I certainly respect all of you for what you do and give to this community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
The time is now 5:15 PM, and the City Council will recess the special session, so we may take up a HUD public hearing scheduled for 5:00 PM. Following the public hearing, we will resume the special session. Ma'am, your name? Ma'am, you can speak at the next one? Ma'am, it looks like you pub, you signed up for public comment. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You'll have two- Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The time is now 5:17 PM on Wednesday, August 6, 2025, and the City of San Antonio City Council Public Comment Meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Corum. Councilmember Castillo Anguiano.
Present.
Councilmember Villagrán. Councilmember Mungia.
Present.
Councilmember Castillo.
Here.
Councilmember Galván.
Here.
Councilmember Aldrete Gavito.
Here.
Councilmember Mesa González.
Present.
Councilmember Spears. Councilmember White.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor, we have Corum.
Uh, the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. We will begin the meeting with a public hearing and then move on to the public comment, which is the last item on the agenda. Written comment may be submitted to the city clerk. Playing of recordings is prohibited. Speakers will be called in the order they signed up to speak, and the next speaker will be announced, so speakers may begin to make their way to the front. Each speaker will have three minutes, and groups of three or more individuals will be given nine minutes. Each speaker will be given two minutes, and groups of three or more individuals will be given six minutes. If a speaker would like to cede their time to another speaker, they must notify the presiding officer prior to beginning their time, as unused minutes are forfeited and cannot be ceded. Only speakers on the list may speak or cede their time. The time is now 5:19 PM, and the public hearing is now open. The city clerk will read the caption for the public hearing.
Item number one is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 Annual Action Plan and Budget for the city's four U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development entitlement grant programs, including the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS Program.
Sorry? Seventeen, okay. Okay. Um, are there any members of the public here to speak on item one?
We have 17 people signed up to speak on item one.
Okay. Excuse me. Alexandria Rodriguez, followed by Jeanette Rico. Please keep your comments to HUD. If you're here to speak for the HUD, on the HUD item, would you please raise your hand? Alexandria Rodriguez?
I made a mistake and was supposed to sign up for the next one, and I'm conceding my time for that.
For the public comment section?
Yes, for the public comment section.
Okay. Uh, Jeanette Rico? And this is on HUD, ma'am? All right, so you'll be for public comment. Anita Kegley? Anyone who's here for the public hearing, please come to the podium.
She called my name. I'm, I'm here for about the budget, not for HUD.
You got Michael Taylor here? We'll, we'll switch you over.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, okay. Who's with you guys?
Okay, he's got Michael Taylor to begin with, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Let me, hold on, let me go down the list of folks that are here, and if they're not here, then we can figure out. So Anita Kegley? Anita Kegley, are you here for HUD, ma'am? Okay. Jasmine Herrera? Here for the other thing. Got it. Juan Attilano? Juan Attilano? Okay. Michael Taylor for HUD. Two minutes, please. You're a group of, okay, of three, so you've got six minutes, with Madeline Mendez and Stephanie Wise. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you for this opportunity to speak today on the proposed HUD Annual Action Plan. My name is Michael Taylor, and I'm president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of San Antonio, and I'm joined by two of my colleagues. We very much appreciate the work that the NHSD team has put into preparing this action plan. Uh, we understand that deciding which types of programs, uh, are funded is a very difficult decision. However, we are very concerned about cuts to gap funding for affordable homeownership. The proposed plan includes 2.7 million year-over-year reduction in funding for affordable homeownership housing development. We expected there would be cuts this year, but we were shocked to find out that homeownership housing was cut 55% from last year. This is a catastrophic reduction for the Habitat program. We first expressed concern at the first action plan public hearing in June. We have been told, uh, these cuts were made because there is a focus on deep affordability. Habitat is the deeply affordable option for first-time homebuyers. The average annual income of a Habitat homebuyer is $45,000. Habitat is the difference between being stuck in generational poverty and dramatically improved health, education, and employment outcomes. We have been meeting with NHSD staff, and it sounds like there may be opportunities, uh, to provide some additional funding this year. But we think there may be a fundamental misunderstanding of who Habitat is, who we serve, and we want to help clarify today. We use federal dollars exclusively for land acquisition and the development of public infrastructure, and there is no other source of funding we can tap into, uh, to fund public infrastructure.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Mendez, and I'm the Assistant Vice President of Habitat for Humanity. Um, as Michael said, Habitat is the deeply affordable option for homeownership. Although we serve up to 80% of the AMI, the average AMI of the Habitat household is 57%. At Habitat, we build and sell three- and four-bedroom homes to qualified buyers at cost with an affordable 0% interest mortgage. The average monthly payment, uh, including taxes and insurance, is $900. The Habitat model builds equity, financial stability, and independence, permanently lifting families out of housing insecurity and generational poverty. As our city continues to address the growing need for affordable housing, it's crucial to continue investing in solutions that offer long-term stability. Habitat delivers a permanent and sustainable affordable housing option. Once a Habitat home is built, it remains affordable without requiring continued public investment. Our deed restrictions ensure it becomes a long-term piece of the city's affordable housing stock. And Habitat turns vacant and bypassed land into tight-knit neighborhoods with homeowners who pay taxes that benefit our community.
My name's Stephanie Weiss. I'm Habitat's Chief Development Officer. The need in San Antonio is so great. We have 38,000 renter households earning between 30 and 50% AMI, who are cost-burdened, living in substandard conditions, and simply overcrowded. Every year, Habitat sees 4,500 of those applications from these renter families every year. But most, so these are ju, our homeowners have produced two, Habitat homeowners have produced two valedictorians in the last 10 years. Poo Ray, Lanier High School's valedictorian, will be the first in his family to attend a four-year university. They came to San Antonio 15 years ago. They lived in a cramped, one-bedroom apartment for several years. Uh, 10 years ago, he, um, his parents learned about Habitat through a church. Uh, they have lived, uh, for 10 years in their affordable four-bedroom, two-bath home on the near west side of San Antonio. He'll be attending Rice University this fall on a full-tuition scholarship. He and his family put in the work, but the Habitat program, our community of funders, and the city helped provide him a firm foundation. There is tremendous community support for the Habitat program because of our efficiency and our effectiveness. We've collected 1,600 signatures in a little over a month from citizens who live in every city council district and explicitly ask that city council allocate $4 million to support land acquisition and public infrastructure development for the first phase of approximately 54 homes in our District Four neighborhood. These are not just signatures. There are supporters who will help leverage every dollar the city provides with financial donations and volunteer labor. $4 million for public infrastructure will leverage 8.5 million in private funding for housebuilding for this project.
If it is not possible for city council to allocate the $4 million from the city's 26 HUD Entitlement Grant Program award to support affordable homeownership programs like Habitat for Humanity, we ask that you commit to supplementing the 2.7 million in HUD home and CDBG funds with an additional 1.3 million in other funding. We're willing to work with any funding that the city can provide, any source, but it's critical that we have this funding, uh, by early next year so that- critical that we have this funding by early next year so that there is not a delay in the infrastructure work for our next project in District Four. The City of San Antonio is an exceptional partner and a consistent funder for Habitat for Humanity. We want to thank you for your ongoing support and commitment to affordable homeownership. Thank you.
John Hinahosa, followed by Judith Gurwitz. Sir, are you here for HUD?
I am actually here for B session's comments. I registered yesterday online before my time starts. I got a confirmation today, and then I was told when I walked in that I was not on the list.
Yes, sir. So right now, we're doing public hearing on the HUD item, so you can speak in just a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you.
I would just recommend that you all check, because the woman who told me I was not on the list after registering online said they continue to have that issue.
Sounds like you were not here when we called your name, sir. Thank you. You look forward to your comments during public comment. Judith Gurwitz, please, followed by Michael Berlang. You're both for B, okay. And Michael Berlang? Berlang, sorry. Michael Berlang, no.
I'm not here to speak on HUD.
Jonathan Melendez, Janice Flowers, Charles Flowers, are you here for HUD? Are you here to speak for the public comment portion?
Yeah.
Sir, Antonio Diaz? You're here to speak on HUD? Are you here to speak on HUD, sir?
Is that the public hearing or the public comment?
Sir, public hearing is on HUD?
Yes.
Okay. You have four minutes together.
Housing is such a necessity in San Antonio. We have so many homeless people. So HUD, and we know the cuts are coming, so whatever the city can allocate still would be not just appreciated, but it is a necessity for the people. So, as you just heard, everyone is in an understanding that there are cuts, and if any funds can be allocated towards housing from other fields that you still have funds in, it is, it is, it is a necessity. San Antonio, if you drive up and down, that's why, I know it's about HUD, but having a priority such as a baseball field or a basketball renovation and revitalization for, that's already been done several times, seems so unnecessary when you see what is going on in our city. So please, as elected officials, if you can find some funding to allocate towards HUD, you would be doing what the people of San Antonio elected you to do.
Diana Flores Uriegas, speaking on the budget, and I oppose that y'all give the money to these people. They got money, they want to build another dome for the Spurs. The Spurs already has a dome. They need to pay for it, not from the city, not from our people here, all over our city. They could use the same dome, and on that tire, I don't think you should give out that money either, because that money belongs to the city here and to be used here to put drains and to help with public housing and Medicare for the elderly and take care of the people from here. Y'all need to stop giving a lot of money out. They have their own money they could use, and they could ask for loans. Y'all need to use that money properly. We have curvy over there flooded, and we don't want that here. Do you want that here? Fix our drainage, put more drainage instead. Fix our roads. Fix what needs to be fixed, not giving out the money that we, the people, give for our taxes, and then they go up more, and they still wind up giving them a whole bunch of money to all these people that are asking for it. We're asking for it, okay? We, the people from San Antonio that have been here forever, are asking for this money too, to be used on us, not on these elites that are asking for money. They already have money. They're billionaires. They're rich. Let them use their own money. Help the people. That's what you should do. Aren't you the mayor? Thank you.
Our last speaker for public hearing is Rhett Smith. That's right, Rhett Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the City Council. I'm surprised I didn't realize that I got on the sign-up. So I signed up to talk about the budget and our city property taxes. So we can literally tax our city into poverty. We have to think of the lower-middle-class taxpayers and property owners, and that is our concern, that property taxes are rising, and it is your job as mayor and city council to find a way to make sure that we're not punishing our citizens and our lower-middle-class taxpayers. So I'm here to advocate for that position. Thank you, Mayor.
Having heard all comments from those persons wishing to speak on this item, the public hearing is now closed. The time is now 5:36. The public comment session is in recess for 10 minutes.